Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our July 30 Board's Everybody's Meet. It's time, Ms. Slade, would you want to give your prayer?
Lord God, thank you for the mercies that you provide to us new as we do more. Father, thank you for your presence here with us and the power that you made available to us to do the work that is, that has been placed before these gentlemen to do. Father, thank you for how you have protected our community and you've raised up people, Lord, with special skills and abilities to put those and sacrifice themselves, put those skills and abilities to work for us, Lord, not to protect us, and to provide the freedoms, Lord, that we enjoy. Father, thank you for those freedoms. Help us to never take them for granted in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, it's time. We're gonna call our planning commissioner meeting to order. And do I have a... To approve the minutes? Motion by Daniel?
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Two out of three ain't bad.
Three of them.
Aye, ayes have it. New considerations?
All right, the first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Lloyd Sam's at 2056 Sunset Ridge. This property is located at the very end of Sunset Ridge. It just dead ends into his property. It's a private road in Indian Mounds subdivision. He's seeking the conditional use permit for a 3,000 square foot metal building house. That's an aerial view of the property. This is the metal building house. The property is zoned RE1, which doesn't allow for the metal exterior. And he owns about thirty, I think thirty something acres there.
And he's already built it.
He's already started it, yes, sir.
That's not... What was the other picture of?
This is just a pole barn he has there.
Oh, that's second.
Mm-hmm. He's got, you know, those are both on the property, but that's where the house, the 3,000 square foot house.
What brought us to this point?
Well, he contacted me after he got started on it. And I told him he needed to get up here and get a permit like that. But like you say, it's a gravel road. It ends into his property. Nobody's, he owns all the property behind him. A private road. So, but I think he's gonna do some brick on it.
He did say that after completion, he might add brick halfway up.
Might.
Way up on a hill, doesn't it?
I mean, that ain't happening.
I'll put brick down for my barn. I don't live in it.
That's his house.
Okay.
All right, and this is just a surrounding property. So we need to set that public hearing, please.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Brad. Second by Jared. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The second item is a conditional use permit for Brently Moore on McIntyre Lane. This property is located on the west side of Tricken Bridge, and it runs through to McIntyre Lane. He's seeking the conditional use permit to place a 2020 16 by 76 manufactured home on McIntyre Lane. It's a 5.80 acre parcel of family land. It's zoned RE1. His grandmother and his father also have a home on this property. This is his site plan. This is his grandmother's house that fronts on Tricken Bridge. This is his father's house, and this is the proposed location of the manufactured home on McIntyre Lane. He's seeking the conditional use under the hardship section of that RE1 zone. His grandmother and his father and stepmother have medical issues and need extra assistance. This is where the home will be placed off of McIntyre. This is a view of his dad's property from McIntyre. This is a view looking from Tricken Bridge at that property. And this is, these are surrounding properties on, this is on Tricken Bridge. And these are on McIntyre Lane. And these are on Tricken Bridge.
Make a motion, set it.
Second.
Motion by Steve, set it. Second by Daniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right, next is a conditional use permit for Prince Development at 672 Holly Bush Road. This property is located on the southeast corner of Holly Bush and Highway 25. They're seeking the conditional use permit for a convenience store, truck stop on this property. They own a total of 23.25 acres. Property is zone C3. That's an aerial view of that property. And this is their overall site plan. The store will be here. This is the area for auto fueling. This is the area for the tractor trailer fueling. And they also show a quick lube and a car wash for future here. There are some wetlands out there that they're going to avoid. And they do, they are going to retain a buffer area. Pretty large buffer area of wooded trees here to buffer against that neighborhood, Blackstone.
Where exactly is this located?
On the corner of Holly Bush and 25, on the southeast corner.
Southeast.
Yeah. You want me to go back to the map?
Nope, I'm over here.
Okay. These are the elevations. The brick will have a brick and stone facade. Access to the property is only from Holly Bush. There's no access on 25. The convenience store will contain approximately 7,942 square feet. We've posted this property, and already we've gotten a good many calls in opposition, mainly due to an increase in traffic, decrease in property values and noise. This is a view of that property. These are views from 25. And then these are surrounding properties. I think there's some representatives here today for Prince Development. If y'all have any questions for them. These are surrounding properties. This is the storage facility across the street. Convenience store. And then this is that neighborhood, Blackstone.
We just did that project where we're trying to help the traffic. It's already pretty bad on that road.
Y'all have any? Y'all don't have any questions for?
I've had a tremendous response opposing. And there are two fueling, fuel and convenience stores on that, in the junction, well. I know Prince has owned this property for quite a while. Longer probably than either one of the others that are there and operating now. But three, how the four corners would have, pretty much, convenient gas station and diesel. There's no way I'll vote for it. I'll tell you that. I can't. There's, there's 800 houses right near it. And traffic is just already, we added a lane to get to 25 because of the traffic. And this is gonna be right in the middle of that added lane. And I just, there's no way I can vote for it. But y'all, I'm not, I'm not the only one on the board, so y'all have your...
Yeah, now, I'll make a few comments on the same spot. I'm, my district is the other side of the street. So, right directly across the street of that same side. And just like Gaines, I've had numerous calls on people that are definitely not in favor of having additional service station, truck stop areas on that corner right there. So, I, I'm not in favor of it either, just in the same point, 'cause the people around there are not in favor of having it. They feel like it's gonna do things, just as Ms. Renee had mentioned in the calls and emails she'd gotten, in regards to property values, traffic increase, safety issues of that, from the truck stops standpoint side of it. So, that's, that's my take, and from the people that I represent on that same side of the area, so. That's my take, but...
I, I do think it would be accepted, well-accepted, if it was something that was a service-oriented. I mean, when I say service, I don't mean, I mean whether it would be a doctor's office or a grocery store or something of that. But when we have gas stations and convenience stores that sell diesel and gas to, one on each side of 25 already. And the traffic right there is tremendous.
And we're gonna put a truck stop backing up to a subdivision. You know what I mean? I mean, I know we're gonna put a tree buffer line and things like that, but that's not good, in my opinion, for those people that live there in Blackstone. That's your area, but I know those folks, I've talked to several homeowners that live in that area that are really upset about it, so. That's my take.
In the past, you guys have demonstrated a sensitivity to the same use being located at the same major thoroughfare intersection. I give you Vine Drive and 471, we've got, that's become auto dealer central for some reason. And you guys finally put your foot down and said, "Two dealerships on two different corners of a four-corner intersection is enough." And even though there is not a zoning impediment for putting a third identical use at that corner, even though there's not a zoning, you guys have a discretion to say, "Enough's enough. We want something different there." And so, you've taken that position in the past. And that has been upheld as an appropriate use of your discretion. So, I just mention that from the standpoint of any concern that there might be that you don't have the authority to say, "We don't want another exact one of those." You do have that authority.
Okay. Do you have a comment? Anyone care to make a motion to set the public hearing?
I'd like to make a comment for food.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Board does not have to take any comments. If the board wants to exercise its discretion, proceed. Comments are welcome to do, so this is not a public hearing. So, this would be in the nature of a comment. You're not required to respond. In fact, I would suggest strongly that the speaker indicate by comment what he wants to say, but we don't, we're not gonna answer any questions.
Sure.
If the board favors. My name's Kevin Thompson. If you don't mind, I'll pull this down where you can hear me. I am the civil engineer that is spearheading this site development for Prince Development. Prince Development owns multiple junction stores. I don't know if y'all visited any of them. In Newton, Mississippi, Union, Mississippi, Carthage, Canton, Philadelphia, all around. These stores are convenience stores with hot food services inside. Most of their sites, what they do is not a truck stop. It's simply truck fueling adjacent to the store. They separate the two for safety and have truck fueling behind the store, have auto fueling in front of the store. As far as similar development to what's there now, the convenience store that is immediately north of Holly Bush at this site does not provide hardly any of the services that this store will provide. The one across does not have dedicated truck fueling. So, they have car and truck mix. They can take care of pickups with diesel, but they don't take care of 18-wheelers with diesel. So, the reason that they're putting this here, as you said, they've owned this property for, for over a decade. And this is the business that they're in, is convenience stores. For them to develop this as some other use would not be in line with their, with their business. I mean, they've held this property for this long to be able to do this. Mr. Jimmy Prince has, has been pushing this. We've been trying to work this out for about three years. There are wetlands on that property. They've already paid $13,000 to mitigate the wetlands on that property to develop this. There's no sanitary sewer there. We have gotten with the Mississippi Department of Health, and we already have an on-site sewer system designed and ready to go and approved by them. They've done everything that they can to preserve the buffer between Blackstone and this property. If you notice, there's also a ditch along Blackstone. There's heavy vegetation there as far as noise and everything from trucks. Most of those trucks coming in are gonna be in an idle. I mean, they're, they're low speed. I would say 90% of the business for this store is gonna come off of Highway 25 or Lakeland Drive into the site. It's not gonna go beyond that. It's gonna provide service to the residents of Blackstone as well as everyone else up and down that road. There are a lot of features here, and, and you know, as far as separation, not only will we have the vegetative buffer, but we can easily put a privacy fence along the east side of the truck area so that separates. As far as traffic, we've had a traffic impact study done. It does not even warrant, based on the anticipated traffic counts for the store and the truck fueling, it doesn't even warrant a turn lane, which is what you already have there now. I've already talked to MDOT. We have not filled out an MDOT permit yet for access. But I've already talked to the 5th District, and they are in favor of the access points that we have here. We designed it in accordance with that. So, everything that we've done here has been to provide a site, a convenience store for the convenience, not only of the travelers on Highway 25, but of the local public. I understand that neighbors always tend to have an issue with new development in their area. I would have the same issue. But at the same time, if it was built, I can assure you, I'd be going in there to get a hot press po'boy and picking up a Diet Mountain Dew and a big bag of Doritos. And, and so, I don't want you to think that I'm gonna sit here and tell you that you need to vote for this because they, because they need the business. The deal is that they've had this property, and this is what they do. It's zoned correctly, and, and they're doing everything to minimize the impact to the neighborhood and at the same time maximize their services to the neighborhood. So, I don't want you to just dismiss it from the standpoint of, we don't like the looks of it. They are providing services, not being provided a location right now.
Yeah, Ms. Renee, tell me what that area is zoned for and what's allowed to go in that zone and why we're having the hearing, if you don't mind.
C3 does allow a convenience store outright. The truck fueling, if you look at the definition of a truck stop in our zoning, it says services, truck services, any kind of truck services, so...
Which is why we're here.
That's why we're here. A conditional use for that part of the application. A convenience store is allowed outright in the C3 zone. It's just the truck fueling that would be the, the extra, why the conditional use.
And that's it.
What about the other type of gas?
Well, that's allowed at a convenience store, you know, the, the auto fueling.
I mean, the only reason is because we separated truck fueling and auto fueling. And we did that for safety. We never want trucks and autos entering at the same access point. It's just an accident waiting to happen, so.
Well, I think what you're hearing is the board that care to have a convenience store there at this moment.
Which basically renders the property completely baggy list to my customers, to my clients. Because that, that is the business they're in, is convenience stores. I mean, it's Prince Oil Company, Prince Development out of Philadelphia that's doing this, and that's...
Well, I think, I think just like what Ms. Renee said, they can put a convenience store there. We, we can't control that. But we can control the truck stop issues and those type of things. So, if the zoning allows you to put a convenience store and stuff there, the board can't stop you from doing that type of thing. But when you're gonna go the route of the truck stops and things like that, then we have a say in that, so that's...
Right.
At least that's what two of us believe.
I, I will say this. I mean, they have plans for, there's 23 acres here. They have plans for future development, and the plan is to have, they've already talked to some clinics and everything to, to put in facilities behind this store. And we've, on-site detention and all that, we've, we've set up to take care of that in the future. But it may be five years, 10 years, 15, who knows? Depends on the market and availability of sewer. Quite honestly, you know, in this area, one of the biggest issues you have is developing without public sewer. And so, you can see the on-site sewer area to the south of the truck fueling area. That's, that's something that, you know, the only way to develop the rest of the property is to get public sewer service there so that you can actually develop the remainder of the property, so. Well, I appreciate y'all taking my comments. And I understand, I'm the county engineer in Scott County, so I fully understand. It's not my first rodeo. All right? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, figure out where we left off. Is there a motion to set the public hearing? Okay, lack of motion. We'll move on to the next item.
All right, next is a conditional use permit for Michael Nichols at 269 West Petros Road. This property is located on the east side of West Petros Road. Mr. Nichols is seeking the conditional use permit for a lawn service business. His business has been operated out of a metal building located next to his home for over two years. This, the house and the metal building sit on the front three acres. He actually owns a total of seven. There's four acres behind this front three. The property is zoned RE1A. That's an aerial view of the property. And this is the metal building. Mr. Nichols' application states that the property is not open to the public, and there are no retail sales from this location. Work-related equipment is stored behind the building and is not visible from the road. Employees come to the shop in the morning and return at the end of the workday. This is a view of his house. And then these are surrounding properties in that neighborhood. And he's here today, if y'all have questions.
Have a motion to set the public hearing? Okay, I'll make the motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Thank y'all. Thank you, the public hearing.
Let, let me make a comment while Mr. Nichols is here about this situation. The reason that this request for a public hearing is before you is because there's been some back and forth among neighbors in this particular area. And there's been confusion over particular land uses. There's been some letter-writing campaigns. Our office staff has had to be involved in reviewing certain land uses in this area. Once that process gets kicked off and our staff is reviewing land uses in an area, the staff takes the opportunity to review all of the land uses in the area. And it's not unusual for those who have been vocalizing complaints about other land uses around their area to find out that they themselves may have something that needs to be addressed. So, we, once that process kicks off, it's, there's really no control over what the ultimate outcome is, okay? And so, there's been some concern about Mr. Nichols' use of this particular piece of property as a business. That came to our attention. We reviewed it. We believe that it would be in the best interest of Mr. Nichols to get this cleared up from a zoning standpoint so that whatever is going on out there, the board has spoken about that use by way of a conditional use so that if in the future there is a continuation of this back and forth by the neighbors, we can address any complaints about that being used as a business with anybody who might raise that issue by pointing out that it now has a conditional use permit.
That's what really kicked all this off.
Yes.
There's a piece of property that's coming up here soon that started all this. It's a nuisance, and hopefully we'll deal with that at another time.
Yes, so, as a, as a byproduct of how this process works, that when the, when the county is called upon to go out and review situations like this, we, we have an obligation to see to it that we cover the waterfront, that we see what everybody is doing as a way of maintaining fairness. In my experience, I've been doing this now for about 13, 14 years. In my experience, everybody's interest seems to be served when the complaining about each other never makes its way up to the board. Because once it gets here, it's, it's unclear exactly where that's headed. So, we find that when neighbors get along and solve their own issues without involving us, things seem to work better that way. So, I just mentioned that for no specific reason in particular, but suggesting that maybe that's probably what needs to happen here.
Can I make one quick comment or address this? This is, which is, here's every neighbor or property owner adjacent to me. Here's a letter and signature saying they support and have no problems with what I'm doing.
We get them to say everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Yes. All right, moving on.
Okay, the last item is a... Did y'all set the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the last item is a conditional use permit for SMB Real Estate LLC. This property is located on the west side of Highway 471 there at Vine Drive. They're seeking the conditional use permit to place an ice vending machine at the Marathon Lakeside Food Mart Convenience Store. That's an aerial view of that property. You can see the convenience store. The ice machine will be located on the south side of the building in the parking lot. He shows it right here. It will take up approximately two parking spaces. It's a 1.69 acre parcel. It's zone C2. This is what the ice machine will look like. This is the convenience store. And that grassy area there is where the machine will be placed.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
All right, motion by Daniel, set it. Five seconds.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? I have, I have a question. What are you gonna do about your garbage? How do you intend to deal with it?
Do you have a question? We'll have a garbage can. We'll have framed up my garbage can. We'll check it regularly.
Do you have any others, other than this one?
No, this is the first one.
Okay, 'cause there's one that I visit regularly. They used to have a dumpster there, and it's longer there. Now, everybody throws their bags out on the ground. It's an ice ore now.
There's a dumpster right close to it, and we both live within two miles from that area. And we'll be checking it, you know, checking it a couple times about a week.
Yeah, that, that's the only thing I'd ask. Just kinda keep oversight on it. You see it running down? Yeah, that's the only thing I ask.
Keep in mind that this is a conditional use permit application. You guys can actually make that a written condition and maintain some level of authority with respect to the sightliness of the site. The condition can be withdrawn if, in fact, the, the site is not maintained aesthetically. If the trash gets out of hand, you have the authority to pull the permit, and that, that use will have to leave.
And I think on, on the public hearing, when we come in for that, that's one of the things I'll just mention, that we wanna keep it cleaned up and stuff like that. As long as you guys are good with that, I'm good with it.
Okay.
All right, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank y'all.
We don't have any site plans for today. Nuisance properties are next.
Yeah.
Mr. Slade.
Right.
Nuisance.
Are we ready for nuisance?
Yes, sir, please.
I'm taking some deep breaths, all right? First item under nuisance considerations, gentlemen, is the Albert and Shelley Hinson nuisance property. I believe Ms. Janice is calling to see if someone with respect to the Hinsons is here. This is at 1287 Monterey Road. This is District 1 parcel. And so, we will open that, that nuisance consideration hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos, and we'll see if Mr. Ms. Hinson...
They're not here.
All right, so we received this complaint in February of this year about rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken on the 6th of February. Certified mail letters were sent. They were returned to sender, unsigned, unclaimed. We've had this property before. And then these were the current pictures taken on the 29th. There has been no change unless it may... There has been no change unless it may have gotten a little worse.
Isn't that around Gilletti?
No, no, that's right there at the beginning of, as soon as you turn on Monterey, headed toward Gilletti.
Okay.
Right there on the right.
Headed toward Gilletti?
Mm-hmm.
Off, right there at the store, turn, turn right there?
Well, if you going, yeah, if you turn, no, turn left at the store, going toward Gilletti, it's about the third house on the right.
Gilletti, Gilletti's on the other end.
Yep.
I know. You turn right, you turn left from Florence?
Yes, from the home.
Okay, I got you. I'm coming the other direction, okay.
Going to the left.
Oh.
Somebody is living on that?
Is, is that habit, habitable?
It's occupied.
It is, it is. You go down there to it, yeah.
Is it rental or is it...
Hmm?
Rental or somebody's...
No, I think it's, I think it's their home.
It is.
I got a couple of them.
That, pictures look worse than driving by. I guess they're just...
They're going fast.
Yeah.
In, in line of the fact that no one's here on behalf of the Hinsons or the, or the Hinsons themselves, Jared, we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate for the board to consider action.
And you ain't choice but to declare a nuisance.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Clear to do this. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
Item B, under nuisance considerations, gentlemen, is the Ignacio Hermosillo nuisance property at twelve seventy-three Monterey Road. It's District One parcel.
Good job, great.
I, I'm not sure. How you like that? I've been working on my Spanish.
You honestly did your homework last night.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I saw that when reneasing it out. I saw that. I said, I need to practice that one. And so, this is District One, Shenandoah, Shenandoah Road. I said District One. I believe Mr. Hermosillo may own two properties. Is that correct?
This is not Shenandoah here. This is Monterey.
Yeah, so there's two listed here. Is it two different properties or is that just a... Do you think that may be a typo?
I think that's a typo. It's supposed to be twelve seventy-three Monterey.
Okay, I was giving him credit for owning two properties in two different districts, so... All right, so I think we're here on the Monterey Road parcel. Am I right? All right, so this is twelve seventy-three Monterey Road. We'll open that public hearing. Renee, if you'll demonstrate with the photos. I'm gonna step out.
I doubt Daniel knows where Shenandoah is.
I don't know how I managed to do that, but...
You got two instead of one.
He's here. These pictures were taken on February the sixth. We received...
Which one is this one now?
This is the Monterey, well...
Twelve se...
Twelve seventy-three Monterey Road.
Seventy-three?
Twelve seventy-three Monterey Road.
Because you got two listed, so I wonder which one.
Yes, I forgot. I was using an old one and I forgot to take off the Shenandoah Road District Two. I'm sorry. So, these pictures were taken on the sixth. We received a complaint about rubbish and debris and an inoperable vehicle. The certified mail was sent and again, it was returned to sender. These pictures were taken on July the twenty-ninth.
Can you go back to that previous one from February?
Here?
Yeah. Do we have an angle of that where that was?
The picture that you showed, which is that it?
That's about it, I think. Is there anything better than that?
I've been busy. This, current, yeah.
One of them just didn't make the upload.
Yeah.
It definitely helps, though.
What, what do you think? So, you've been out there. What do you think? What do y'all think?
The front of it's pretty clean. It's back there in the back. It's got some appliances, some rubbish and debris, that kind of stuff just needs to be picked up.
Well, may as well go and get it cleaned up while you had it. What? What's your, what's your plan on cleaning the rest of it up?
Okay, could I take this down?
Yep.
Okay, that deal, that deal in the back, I'm, 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 I'm gonna make a shop in the back. So, what I have in the back, I got a materials that I want to use it. And I covered it up with plastics. That's one of the reasons it looked like that, you know? I covered it up with plastic to not get it wet. So, after I finish up my shop in the back, I'm gonna send all the materials in one place in a, in a...
How long will you have your shop done?
Uh, well, it's only me and my son living there, so it'll take me a little bit of time. You know, we work him every day, but we do little by little and do the much as we can, you know? But that's part of the plan, you know? The first time I pull out the, that, all the stuff was there, you know? Like, uh, old cars that are not at use, so I'm just pulling them out of the...
Is it just scrap iron or scrap stuff?
I got a little bit of scrap, you know, because I'm doing construction sometimes and other times. So, I make a pile, fill it up in my trailer and dump it, you know? So, I'm using a little bit of space there. So, I work on construction every day and that's one of the reasons. I got a bunch of brick that I figured out, so I got a brick for several places. And, uh, they're different kind of bricks that they, we use it for one building or another building. So, sometimes we don't find the same kind of brick and we got, uh, things to do, we use those bricks, you know? So, it's one of the reasons. So, that's one of the reasons I'm trying to make a shop. Probably it's gonna take me about two to three months to get it done. Uh, I want to try to build my shop. I got the columns already there and I got the steel to put it on already, so...
Okay. Just a timeframe. I mean, you think, you think you're gonna be two months, three months, six months, what?
Well, let me get a half a year and then clean it up.
Huh?
Then let me get a six months and I'll...
No, I'm talking about to get your shop built.
Oh, the shop built? Ah, it's gonna take me, uh, probably a month to get it done. Yeah. Because I'm already got the columns and I got the steel and everything. Put them on, you know, just... You're gonna have a little bit of time.
So, then you're gonna, and you're gonna move a lot of this stuff into shop?
Yeah, I'm gonna sell them in the shop.
Some of the material is for building the shop.
Well, what happened, it's not a lot of taste. I only take it all over because a lot of wet areas. And I can't get through to there when it's raining. So, sometimes I have to pull them out and I have to put them in the areas where I can get in, you know? Where I can get in and pull them out when I need it. So, if I got the shop right there, that's not really many. That only takes us all over, you know, that's all over. But that's not really many. It's not gonna be a lot of stuff, you know?
Okay, but some of the material you got covered up is for the shop, to build the shop with?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm, I'm gonna use those materials to build the shop, yeah. Yeah. That bunch of materials you see them in the back, I'm gonna use them for building the shop, yeah.
So, while we're having that discussion, I think, I, I don't want to step on anybody up here. But my assumption would be that if you hear that he's gonna have an enclosed space to be able to keep the materials in, that that's better than what we're doing now. But we want to make sure that that enclosed space gets built appropriately. And so, I wanted to make sure that Mr. Hermosillo knew that he needs to get with Ms. Renee or Mr. Dwayne and make sure you have a permit for your, for your shop. You need a permit for that, okay? So, I don't want us to be back up here dealing with another issue.
Well, that was, yeah, I was going there and I was just getting the time of when he thought he'd get it built. But even after, after it's built and you got this material used or whatever, the rest of it needs to be cleaned up. I mean, what you're not using needs to be, gonna be cleaned up.
Uh, I'm gonna hold them out. Whatever, whatever I'm not using, I'm gonna hold them up to the top, to the...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well...
Let's just make sure we get with, we get with community development, buy a permit for your shop.
You're gonna have to get a permit for your building. So, you need to get with them. Otherwise, you may back up in a worse situation.
That gonna happen now or...
Well, as soon as we can get that done, I suspect there's some paperwork that you'll have to fill out that they will need to see.
Not, not right now at this meeting, but yeah.
As soon as possible.
You've done a good job of cleaning up to this point. But if I don't declare it, kind of declare it and just let it sit?
Yes, sir.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Because that one, I'll have to start over again.
Right.
All right, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna declare the nuisance. But we're gonna hold, we're gonna just hold, hold that. And that way, if you don't go ahead and do everything you said, then it's, we won't have to start over again. We're gonna, we just move right on forward and send it on up to a court, let a court decide what to do. But, so, we're gonna, I'm, my motion would be to go and clear the nuisance and to kind of sit on it, see what he's doing. Make sure, monitor it. Make sure you're moving forward like you said. And then clean up after the fact and everything. That, that'll help you out, definitely, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion?
Hey, don't we have one more?
No, I don't think it's always a problem.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
He didn't have two properties?
No, sir.
No, that was, that was my mistake.
Okay, I thought he had two properties. Okay, that's what I was thinking. That's what I said, which one is this?
As much as I looked over that, I don't know how I missed I did that. That was just my mistake.
Okay. Are you really confused us all there?
No, I'm sorry.
Those two properties are side by side, Mr. The first one and the second one there on Monterey.
The first, A and B.
Yeah, I think he's trying to confuse it even more.
Shenandoah has got nothing to do with it.
Is anybody here for C or D?
Uh, we're fixing to, I believe there may be somebody out there, Steve.
If there wasn't, I'd say let's just go both.
All right, item C will be the William Studdam Jr. property, the nuisance property at one twenty-eight Jody Drive. This is District Four. We'll open that public hearing and Ms. Janice is gonna check to see if Mr. Studdam or someone on his behalf is here. So, Renee, if you'll go ahead and demonstrate with photos, please.
All right, so we received a complaint on the eighteenth of May. These pictures were taken on the eighteenth showing the condition of the property. It was in regard to rubbish and debris and grass. The certified mail was sent, but it was returned to sender. And these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-ninth.
If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
William Sylvester Studdam Jr.
And your address?
One twenty-eight Jody.
All right.
All right, so...
Look like vehicles still there. Few washing machines or something around there.
Do you own that property or do you live there?
Yes, sir, we live there.
How come y'all didn't clean it up after you got a letter?
Sir, um...
Why didn't you clean it up after you got the letter?
Um, my uncle's supposed to be coming to get the washers. He said he wanted them. We were gonna throw them away, but he said, um, they, they still work. He said he was gonna come pick them up.
That one in the back left corner back there?
Yes, sir. They actually work. Yes, sir. The van, I don't know, um, exactly what Rebecca, which is my fiancee, what she wants to do with it, because I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Well... Does it run?
Yes, sir. It's just, it's got, it's got shifting problems, but, uh, she didn't really just want to get rid of it. We were trying to sell it for, you know, whatever we could get for it. The GMC, which is in front of the Toyota, it, it runs too. It just, it, it needs a starter. And I was actually trying to get the diesel, which is towards the driveway. Yes, sir, the one on the right, the green one. My daughter's car's in the shop, so she's actually borrowing my dad's Toyota to get back and forth to work. We were having to come up with thirty-two hundred bucks to get it back from Ranco Transmission so I could get the diesel to him, because the transmission went out on it too. I hadn't had it that long.
So, the truck on the right doesn't run either?
Transmission went out.
So, when I say run, that means you get it, drive it down the road?
Oh, yes, well, yes, sir.
Three of those, you can't get in and drive down the road?
No, sir.
What model's the Toyota usually?
Which one?
The one you said needed thirty-two hundred dollars to fix it.
Oh, it's, um, it's a, it's an O for, uh, twenty fifteen.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering if it's worth thirty-two hundred dollars.
All right.
To actually fix it, so I was wondering.
Well, I'd say you need to get busy, because we're gonna set it for a pub... I'm gonna make a motion. We set this, uh, as a nuisance property. And you'll have a little bit of time, but you can't just kick this can down the road like you did after you got your letter and say, well, somebody's coming to get it or whatever. Because the next step will be in the courthouse. So, I make that motion.
All right, that motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Get, just get that stuff cleaned up. You'll be all right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item under the nuisance property considerations is item D, Brenda Griffin, nuisance property, one fifty-eight Jody Drive, District Four. So, we'll open that public hearing. This time, Renee will demonstrate with photos.
All right, so we received a complaint here on June the ninth about rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicle. The certified mail was sent and was delivered, both of them. It was received. These pictures were taken on the ninth. And then these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-ninth of July.
Brenda Griffin, one fifty-eight Jody Drive, Pilar.
It appears that y'all have done some cleaning and is there that vehicle? What do you found on that?
Uh, that vehicle, we had called the junk place and they was supposed to have come yesterday and got that. But I don't know if they come or not. I actually do not live there. The property is mine. I bought it ten years ago and gave it to my son. So, I hardly ever even go by there. But I have been going by there since I got the notifications. And he told me yesterday that they was supposed to have come and got that vehicle. But I don't know if they got it or not.
What's that other stuff back there?
That is, right beside the car on the driver's side is a stack of lumber that's covered up. And then that, back behind it, I'm really not even sure what that is. But he has done some cleanup. And I told him yesterday that he needed to do a little bit more.
You can't even put force and effort, but there's...
Yeah, he works on houses and stuff and does the carpenter work and stuff like that. And I think that's what that is on that trailer, is some stuff that he had tore out of a house. But he has done some cleanup. Now, the other two vehicles, the little gray car, it belongs to a guy that works with him, but it runs. And the white truck, he was having some kind of car problems with that. They had been working on it. But it also runs. And the big gray truck, it runs. The only car that's not running is the black one on the other side.
That you got somebody coming to get it?
Yeah, somebody is supposed to be coming to get it. And they may have gotten it yesterday. I don't know. But, um, he, he told them that they was gonna come get it, whoever the junk people was.
Whatever that is back there, you don't know what it is? Obviously, it doesn't look good, you know?
Yeah, it don't.
It's something needs to be done with it.
Okay.
I would tell you, I, and you may have contacted them, but there's a, there's a, uh, somebody, a company, I guess Salvage Yard.
Yeah.
They'll come actually pay you some money to pick it up.
Well, that may be who he contacted. I don't...
I got, I, I know I've had him pick up some things.
I don't know who he talked to. He just told me that he talked to some junk people.
Well, I'm just telling you, there are some that will actually give you...
Well, if they don't come and get it, I'm gonna try to find somebody else who can come and get it.
Don't sell it to your neighbor that way.
If it's a Studdam...
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know who lives over there on that road.
Yes, ma'am.
Like I said, I bought the place about ten years ago and gave it to him.
Right.
And I hardly even go over there.
Well, I think Ms. Griffin completely understands this, so I, this is just for my own edification here. But it, it seems to me that the situation has been visited upon you.
Yeah.
In the county, the only option that the county has is to talk to the owner of the property about the condition of property.
Yeah.
And so, if you've got some sort of formal arrangement with your son, that, that could be helpful for us if we know that he's an official renter and can provide us with a rental agreement.
Yeah, well, he don't, he don't pay rent. He just, he's just there.
But you the one who...
Yeah, I'm the one responsible for it, yeah.
I'm looking for a way to help you as a mom be able to have, uh, allow us to have a little more leverage to deal directly with him.
Yeah.
Since he's the one who's occupied the property. So to the extent that you can help us by providing us with some sort of formal lease agreement of some kind, even if you're not gonna pay anything.
Yeah.
Then that would be helpful, okay?
Okay.
And we could directly deal with him.
Yeah.
And have him come and talk to the board about the condition of the property.
Yeah, well, that's what I told him. I said, well, you know, this is your garbage, not mine.
Yes.
And, but...
Unfortunately, we can only talk to the owner.
That's what I told him. I said, well, I'm gonna go this time. I said, but if it comes back up again, this, this is gonna be on you.
Okay, all right.
Greg, give her that up there. Give her that. They'll, they'll, uh, Claire, I'm gonna pick it up if she chooses, meet somebody.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, hopefully he'll have it, you know, gone within the next day or two anyway. Um, and like I said, I don't know, I don't know what that other stuff is out there. I'd have to go and look at it to see what it is, but it probably needs cleaning up anyway, so...
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and set it, monitor it for thirty days. If it's cleaned up, y'all take care of it. If it's not, send it up to you.
Yep.
Okay. I'm sure it'll be done before thirty days.
Good, good.
Okay, thank you.
I got a motion by Steve declaring nuisance, three days to get cleaned. Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes aye.
To the extent that, that we fail to close A, B, C, and D under nuisance considerations, all of those hearings are closed.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye. All right, back to our board supervisor meeting now, public comment, Dave Van. Is Dave out there?
Yes, I'm here. Is Dave out there? Was sending a bottle in? Yes, he's got, yes, Dave's with him, sending both in.
Yeah, I don't see any way them doing it online, so all those kids are about to get in trouble. I mean, one or two are...
Hey, about to get in trouble?
Yeah, or even worse, an endless summer of onus.
Intro.
Yep.
Hey, y'all get me that number, that guy won't put that service station, I put it down in the bucket.
Okay. Yep. I mean, it...
Look, I know the guy's holding the property. I was texting him, I said, you did good selling that piece.
It would be great.
We're going up there.
Forty-three and twenty-five come together.
Yeah, I think perfect.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are y'all? Shall I take, take this off my speaker?
Yeah.
I don't speak very well as it is. My kids act like they can't ever understand me, so I don't know what's going on around here. Uh, Mr. Chairman and fellow board supervisors, thank you for letting me come before you today. I appreciate it very much. Uh, I am Director of Region Eight Mental Health, and, uh, nineteen ninety-seven Senate Bill twenty-one hundred requires me to come before you face to face at least once a year. Uh, but I'll be available to you anytime you need me, twenty-four seven. So you guys that I've worked with, you know that, uh, that we try our best to, to do everything we can to take care of your constituents and those that have mentally illness, uh, alcohol and drug, uh, issues, and, uh, ADD, intellectual and developmental disability issues in Rankin County. Uh, Mr. Chairman, could I approach and pass out this, uh, this annual report?
I'm required to, to give to you guys every year, but...
Hi, Howard, good to see you.
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Good, good.
Yes, sir.
Who's your longest-serving board member this time?
Longest-serving?
Yeah.
It's either, uh, Cliff Reed from Simpson County or Melvin Ray from Madison County, longest-serving board member. They came on right after I came on in nineteen ninety-seven, so what's that, twenty-two years? Uh, Mr. Ray is, I wanna say eighty-two years old, and Mr. Reed, uh, Cliff Reed, he's, uh, in his late seventies. Uh, so they would certainly be the...
Ours has a long way to go then.
Mentally or physically. Uh, anyway, this is our annual report, and, uh, um, you can see, uh, the numbers here, and I can certainly answer any questions you have today or any other time that you need me to be available for you. A couple of things I'd like to point out. We have a five-county region. We serve a total of sixteen thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-six individuals at our mental health centers last year. Most of them were outpatient, uh, patients, but, uh, about twenty percent were inpatient patients. Um, and that is in all three tracks, A and D, alcohol and drug services, uh, intellectual, developmental disabilities, and mental health. We, um, uh, and that is in the five-county area in Rankin County, uh, which we serve the most. We are the largest. This is where our administrative offices are, here in Rankin County. Uh, we serve six thousand four hundred and sixty-three individuals here in Rankin County, and, uh, we have just under two hundred staff members here at Marquette Road, employees. And our expenditures totally, uh, total region-wide were twenty-seven million, and in Rankin County, um, eight million six hundred and seventy thousand. And we appreciate your allocations, because your allocations allows us to serve all of the individuals regardless of their ability to pay. Of the sixteen thousand individuals we served last year, about six thousand of those individuals had no, uh, ability to pay. They had no funding source, uh, uh, payer source, uh, for services, including private insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, they had nothing. And, uh, and we were able to, to use those, uh, dollars that you allocate to us for crisis services to respond twenty-four seven and to serve people, uh, regardless of their ability to pay.
Dave, last year you came and said that your numbers are just going steadily up. Are you, are you still that way?
Um, yes. No, it hasn't plateaued. We're still opening probably three hundred new cases every month, uh, and in mental health, of course, uh, patients don't go away like they do, uh, in the physiological area, and, um, most of them stay with you forever. So, uh, National Mental Health Institute estimates about ten percent of population will, uh, need, uh, mental health services, and of course, in, in Rankin County, that would be considerably more than what we have now. So if you compare that to national numbers, we're probably under that number, but if you compare it to other areas of Mississippi, we're very much over that average number in Mississippi.
Dave, you're doing a great job, sir.
Well, I hope so, and thank you very much.
Tell you...
Yes, sir, Mr. Gaines?
Tell me, people that fall through the net, that don't have, I mean, I understand that if they don't have insurance.
Hmm.
And they don't have Medicaid or Medicare or Social Security, uh, SSI or... Where do you see most of these people? I mean, where is the gap that they fall through? Is it because they're just not applying for what's out there, or is there a big gap?
I, i- in having some type of insurance, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, some payment, I mean, whether it's...
Well, um, obviously, our largest population is the Medicaid population.
Yeah.
Uh, not that mental health discriminates, and it doesn't matter which socioeconomic status is, you can still have a mental illness. But about twenty-five percent of the population will suffer from a mental illness, about ten percent will seek services in the, in the public sector. And another sixty-nine percent will seek services in the private sector. Those are the individuals that want to drive their car back behind the building so nobody will see them, and they'll pay three hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and they have Blue Cross insurance, or they have good jobs and they can pay three hundred and fifty dollars per session. In our situation, we're gonna be the lowest cost services, but certainly have the largest array of services, so I like to say that our process is better and gives people a better chance of reaching their optimal ability. But ha- given the fact that the private population's gonna go here, the public populations are those who seek services in the public sector, go here, to Region Eight. Many of those individuals, there's a lot of dynamics, but they don't have private insurance. A lot of them are not high-functioning, not necessarily because they're not intelligent, but because they're not in reality today. We deal with schizophrenics and manic depressants. So, uh, they're paperwork laps, uh, they don't qualify for Medicaid or Medicare, uh, not Medicare, but Medicaid. They don't have, uh, a job, or if they do have a job, it's a meaningful job, but it doesn't offer benefits. Uh, and they're over the gap to qualify for Medicaid. There's just a gap there. I can't tell you why, but I know that, you know, that years ago, uh, the federal government required everybody to have insurance, uh, and I know that you have to list that on your taxes for those counties in here, but I can tell you, there are thousands of Mississippians that do not have anything, uh, and that is a fact. And there are a lot of different reasons for that. Uh, again, I mean, we've got people that have insurance one month that don't have it the next month, because they didn't do their paperwork, they let it lapse, and they didn't have family support or strong family support, or they didn't, the family support didn't know about it. And, uh, um, we, we see homeless people, uh, and you don't have to live on the streets to be homeless. If you don't have a place of your own, uh, we identify homelessness as not having a place of your own. You can be forty years old, and if you live with, with, uh, mom and dad, uh, involuntarily, uh, then, then we call you homeless. And most of those individuals don't have benefits. A lot of them qualify for benefits. And I did a eight-hour deposition with, uh, DOJ and the federal government that sue in the state of Mississippi, and they came down and they said, well, why do all these people not have insurance? And I said, you tell me, I don't know. I said, but we'll do our best to help them get the benefits that they qualify for, and they said, well, in Mississippi, all of these folks need to be on Medicaid. And, uh, I'm not gonna get into that, but, you know, they were pushing the fact that, that Mississippi needed to expand Medicaid in order to allow, uh, a larger population to have health insurance. And, um, um, I don't agree or disagree with that. And so I'm just saying that, uh, that's their opinion, that's what they think needs to happen in the state of Mississippi for, to, 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 to bridge that gap that you're talking about. And of course, uh, the other idea is that, uh, individuals need to, uh, find meaningful work and go to work and, and get, uh, group benefits. But as you know, you know, a lot of, uh, employers are not offering group benefits today because, uh, of, of the financial burden that they're under. So I can't tell you exactly, but I can tell you, there's many different reasons, and those are some of them, Mr. Gaines.
Go, Brian.
It's not a Dave here, I think the expert is my go-to man. Would you tell them how much the state has cut funding for mental health and the beds that we feel the impact that has on the general, the people that work at the home?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, and thank you, Chair, uh, and we do work well together, and everybody in Rankin County, we work with them. I can't say that about every county, but I can say that about Rankin County. They've always supported those who need, uh, mental health, uh, treatment. But, uh, I, I know that we have some, uh, uh, medical staff that supplies services to the sheriff's office here, and I know that we have some inpatient treatment facilities, alcohol and drug, and psychiatric, uh, treatment facilities, and we've been able to place a lot of those for the sheriff, uh, in our facilities at no cost to the county. And, uh, and so, and no cost to the sheriff's budget, uh, either. And, um, and hopefully we've done a good job, but I hope, we're responsive to them twenty-four seven, and they're responsive to our needs twenty-four seven also, which we have had some needs where we needed law enforcement involvement, uh...
The, the, the number of beds we've got, I mean, we can't count, we have to count on y'all, y'all, we can't count in state now.
Right, we, we have, uh, inpatient psychiatric beds now, so it used to be when you'd go to the county clerk's office and, and, uh, uh, then you'd have a, you'd file for an involuntary commitment, and there would be an interim period where there's not a bed at the state hospital, and there's still not a bed at the state hospital, and that would require the sheriff, uh, uh, in any county to put those individuals in jail in a place that they probably should not be, because they'd be in jail just because they're mentally ill, but after the, the court order's written, then they couldn't be released into the community. Well, they could be, but they couldn't safely be released into the community, because the judge has just determined that they're, um, severe harm to themselves or someone else. And so, um, so now we provide that interim care. Nobody goes to the jail simply because they have a mental illness. Now, I can't say that people in jail don't have a mental illness. Every one of them do, and I think the sheriff, sheriff can verify that. And, uh, if you don't believe them, just ask them, huh? So, 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 uh, so we have an inpatient psychiatric facility and, uh, to, to place the individuals that go through the involuntary commitment process as opposed to those in the...
How many can you have at one time?
We have sixteen beds, uh, and fourteen days is about the average stay in a psychiatric facility now. Uh, Whitfield, it's probably less than that. In our facility, probably...
Fourteen days is more than you get for stealing a car.
Fourteen days? Yeah. Well, you know, used to, people would go to Whitfield and stay forever, and they would die at Whitfield. And, uh, and the truth of the matter is, is that, uh, uh, you know, the federal government suing the state of Mississippi for being too institutionally heavy right now. So if you read the newspaper at any point in time, eight years, about mental health, you'd know that. I'm somewhere on the fence, and by the way, when I did that eight-hour deposition, neither side used me. Because I'm on the fence when it come... But we see patients that do need inpatient treatment, and they are harmed to themselves or others, and, uh, to the community and to themselves, and they need to be somewhere. But the truth of the matter is, is technology and medication is so much better today that we do see people respond, schizophrenics respond into medication within fourteen days. And as long as they stay on that medication and they have the support they need and the resources they need, they can maintain in the community with their family members, and that's where they want to be, and that's where they ought to be, and a lot of them, uh, have meaningful employment in the community and pay taxes too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
I think you covered it.
All right, thank you for your time, and I appreciate all of your support. Always, always. And we're not asking for any additional allocations.
That was the most important part of the presentation.
Thank you.
Best for last.
Thank y'all, yeah. And, and we have it in, what, fifteen years or so, so we'll do our best. When we run out of money, I'll retire. Thank you.
Gentlemen, before we move to the next item under public comment, I wanted to just make sure that we're all on the same page and, and that everybody's comfortable. This next item that's on public comment, Mr. Davis, uh, well, it technically, it will be a personnel item. The board is not required to enter into executive session to make discussions or to have discussions about personnel items. You're authorized to do so for that particular matter, but you're not required to do so. The, uh, the issue that you will be discussing is one that was brought to your attention by a constituent. Uh, that constituent raised a concern and did not ask that it be kept confidential or private. I didn't see anything in that communication suggesting that the individual did not want it discussed publicly. And so I don't think that we're prohibited from discussing it publicly if that's what the board chooses to do. I just wanted to remind the board that because this is in fact a personnel item, that you do have the right to enter into executive session. For that discussion, you are not required to do so.
What about, uh, B, we're not doing it?
Sir, B's actually been, uh, handled. Uh, it is, it is under continuing discussion. We felt like it was premature to have a discussion, uh, in public comment about that at this time.
Okay.
So this is item C.
Are you ready, Frank? Mr. Davis, ready? Jay?
Ma'am?
Are you ready for Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Morning. All right. Mr. Davis, reading why we asked you to come today. I don't know if you're aware, but we, uh, had a couple complaints about the service that we provide to some of the people who came to see you. One of them, most recently, he said that, uh, you told him that basically called him a liar, and that, uh, he ended up going to the state and receiving help from them. You, uh...
Not aware of that. Who was that?
I don't remember his name.
Howard.
I'm looking up.
DM Howard.
Yeah, Howard.
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 I'd have to check my recor- I keep very copious notes of everybody that I, I, uh, you know, counsel and support, and I didn't know, I didn't, I checked my records, but what was, what was this concern?
Uh, basically, I just said that he came and was trying to receive, you know, assistance.
I believe, I believe what it was, if you...
Go ahead.
I believe what it was, he passed away, and his son reached out and contacted you on some issues in the last, I guess, two to three weeks, I guess, is when it was, since our last meeting, and ran into some issues and some hiccups in regards to services that may be rendered from our veterans' office. Are you familiar with that?
His mother is supposed to be getting money from two ex-husb- or deceased husbands.
Uh, well, it, it's contingent upon whether his, uh, he deceased as a result of a service-connected disability. And if, if that's the case, then there's a strong possibility that she would get what we call widow's pension.
Right, and do, do you remember the conversation with Mr. Howard?
No, I, I do know.
So what I, what I'd like to ask is...
I have to check my records, because I, I have records.
And what I'd like to ask is you go back and check your records on Mr. Howard. And what I'd like to ask is you go back and check your records on Mr. Howard and try to figure out exactly where our break in communication was between the death of Mr. Howard as a veteran here in Rankin County, a longtime resident of Rankin County.
Okay.
And follow back up with us, maybe an email or something like that.
Okay.
Identify, and I'd also like to reach back out to the family to be sure that they have everything they need on the passing of this veteran here in Rankin County.
Now, and the name is Howie?
Howie, H.O.W.I.E., Howie.
Do you have a first name by any chance?
D.M. was his initials.
D.M. Howie.
Right, and I believe his son reached out to you, it's been in the last two to three weeks.
What was his son's name, do you remember?
I don't remember his name off the top of my head, but when you find your records on Mr. Howard, I'm sure you spoke to, I can look the email back up in a second, but if you would, I'd like to get an update on that.
Yeah.
Kind of the situation on that, and I want to stress two things, if I can, just a second. Number one, the importance that we place on every veteran, obviously in the United States, but especially here in Rankin County, in the state of Mississippi. It's a critical thing. My grandfather was a veteran, my father's a veteran, and those are critical, critical people that's brought a lot of peace to a lot of Americans that allow us to do the things we do every single day. And I'm sure you share with the same views on the importance of helping those veterans from getting into different places or benefits they may have, or issues that may come up, and they come up a lot. So I want to be sure that we express our importance to the veterans in Rankin County, and we're doing everything we can. The second question I've got for you is, tell me how your daily staff works out. I mean, who do you report to every single day when you come into office?
Well, I don't report to anybody, basically. I have, this is my July activity report.
Right.
Are you sure you're getting a copy of that?
Who do you, who do you turn those into?
Janice, Janice sent it, gets that, and I haven't emailed it to you yet.
That's okay.
But that is done, that's my copy.
So you get a monthly report?
Yeah, you get a monthly report. I had seventy, seventy claims in July.
Right, so I guess my question is, and you may not be the direct one to answer it, but if we have an employee that works for the board supervisor, he should report to somebody. Do we know? Do you know, Jeff?
They never have.
To the, to the board.
I guess that's kind of the point that runs me through the side of it. If this person reports to the board, and somehow, I guess, maybe by bad math and voters, I wound up here for four years, and this is the first report I ever got from my veterans' office. So I'm kind of confused on who he reports to, how he reports his information, these sheets, how that goes down, how that's tracked, because if he works for the board supervisors...
Well, we've been in the past, the prior, the prior position, we did get these reports.
We still get it, we still get it.
And we still do.
And they go through various documents, Dan.
But if you have an issue, who do you, who do you call for an issue? Let's say you got a problem with whatever, who do you call and contact?
I'll, I'll talk to Janice.
That's who I go to, too. I mean, I can't argue, that's a good point.
I talk to Janice. I've been, I'm on my eleventh year doing this, I'm retired Army, had thirty-four years of service, retired as a colonel in the Army, I was prior enlisted. So I'm really sensitive and concerned about all the veterans and stuff. Every year, we get recertified, all the veteran service officers in the state gets recertified every year, and.
I guess my issue, if, if.
It's part-time, I work two days a week.
And there's a complaint, or there's an attaboy, or there's some type of issue you need resolved in the county, who do you go to? James?
Sir?
I mean, I mean, that's, that's, that's your only really.
If I have an issue, I typically don't have any issues.
I guess, I guess, I guess, Craig, that's my issue right now, is if he's one of our employees, and I appreciate you being one of our employees.
Two days, two days a week, I'm part-time.
Two days a week, part-time employee on the veteran's side, we don't have any type of accountability for that?
Well, no, I, I think the board can exercise accountability if, if it's something that we need to step up from the standpoint of a more streamlined process, then we need to do that.
I guess my issue is, who oversees what goes on in our veterans' office? No one?
Yeah, I, I think, I think no one other than the board, and it's obvious that you guys have not had an opportunity to do that or a plan to do that. No one's been assigned that responsibility from the board.
Like, for example, Janice. She, she knows how to go through the line. If we don't have any flow of our employees to understand if you've got a problem, if you're having issues, if you're having, if you need more whatever, who do you go to? James?
I, I do, but, you know, the, we get training every year, certified training, there's per DM and stuff, and I work with Janice on that, and then if I need any supplies, I go to purchasing and do that, and pretty much keep a low profile because you're all so busy here, and you've got all, you know, lots of things going on, so.
I guess, I guess the only thing, last thing I'll say about it, is I want some oversight of our veterans' side of everything, to be sure you have every resource and tool you need, that our veterans are getting everything they're taking care of.
Yeah.
Somebody, I don't know who we want to put in charge of it. In theory, there's got to be some kind of management of board supervisors, right?
Yes.
So, maybe the president governs it or something, I don't care how we do it.
Right, he's very close over there.
There, there needs to be, there needs to be some oversight, and I'm not talking about micromanaging, I mean, it needs, but there needs to be some oversight of our veterans' issues, so when issues come up.
Well, I think this is the oversight, really and truly, I mean, whenever we have people that are not.
This is the first I've ever heard in all the years I've been here, so, really, and I've heard where you've helped many, many, you helped, I know you helped my, not you, but prior to, with my father, it was better than also, but this is actually the first really issue I've ever heard, it's really been an issue to this point.
Yeah, but Mr. Davis, following up on what we started with, I would like for you to follow up with the family and, and reach out to them and let them know you do care and that we do care, because we definitely don't want to leave a bad taste in their mouth.
Certainly.
Okay, will you let us know when you do that?
Yes, sir. Actually, I just got a call this morning from a former coach, and I can't reveal who it was, and we spent a couple hours yesterday for service-connected disability and some other stuff, and he said, "Hey, sir, I want to thank you for your help." And I says, "That's what I'm here for."
Yeah, I guess that's kind of my thing, I just don't understand how we have an employee that, with no oversight, but.
We appreciate your service, appreciate what you do.
Yes, sir.
We just, this is, like Jared said, the first time we heard any issues out of this, and we're just making sure we don't, we're not dropping a ball on our veterans.
Oh, I understand, and I'll follow up and find, get the information on this.
It was an expression of dissatisfaction with the way that the interaction was handled. I think that's what needs to be clear in Mr. Davis's mind when he leaves here as to what the problem is, that the individual that sought the service was not satisfied with the way that it was handled, and so that, that needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed directly with that individual because they're the ones who perceived that the service was not what it should be, okay? And so I think what the board would appreciate is some sort of follow-up report as to how that conversation attempting to address what went wrong, how that was handled, and, and what, if any, recommendations that you might have for how to handle similar situations in the future. That would be helpful to the board as well. And maybe perhaps as monthly reports come, that as, maybe we can make those a part of your board meeting packet.
Yeah, I can lay them out.
Yeah, and just, we'll just attach that to your board meeting packet so that as you're working through your board meeting packet.
I don't, I don't necessarily have to see them, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking for from our office standpoint up here, from my administrative offices up here, that we have some oversight of our veterans, to be sure you're getting all the resources and tools you need and the communication processes, that, that's what I'd like. I don't want any county, this, I'll give you just Daniel's two cents opinion, I like everybody to have somebody to talk to if they need something. That's my, that's my main thing.
I think, I think you know our door is open if you need something.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I understand. It's been very helpful, and I do have one question.
Sure.
I understand that the Veteran Affairs Office will be relocated in the other building, and do we know, do we have a timeframe on that? Because I do have.
We only run a year and a half. Hopefully, we're only up.
I do have, I got some information that indicated where our office would be, and it's going to be on the first floor, because a lot of the veterans cannot walk up the steps and stuff, and we have to help them with the elevator, and I understand that we will be on the first floor, and that's going to be very positive for them because a lot of the older veterans particularly, they have a difficult time, you know, and I help them, you know, through the elevator.
Without it removed, we're going, next step is to go and remodel the courthouse, and so then we'll be moving on.
And that's going to be a while, apparently.
It'll be a few months.
Okay.
Yes.
I will get that information.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
All right, next, Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Hey, while he's coming up there on this public comment about the courthouse?
Yeah.
Can we get an overview of that at some point during the, because I got a couple questions on it.
We met yesterday, we actually had a meeting yesterday with JH&amp;H. It was, it had to be a video conference, but the, the departments that are impacted were invited to come and to participate in that overview. This is sort of a fine-tuning, Daniel, of the, the actual rendering, the layout of the, of the interior of the site, so we had a representative election commission was there, Renee was there from her office, we had, I think the coroner was able to make it yesterday, so at any rate, we had a good representation of those who were impacted by it, and the takeaway was, the meeting didn't go very long, it was about a thirty-minute meeting from what I recall, because everybody seemed to be satisfied with the layout. So the layout itself has now been, in essence, not, not approved because that's you guys, but at least passed over with an indication of satisfaction from the department, so they'll be using the facility, they have what they need in there. I think the next step now is to give you guys some idea about cost to do the remodel and timeframe, and so that's coming.
Okay, I guess my main question was the courthouse we're working in now.
Oh, the new one?
The new one right there.
Okay, well, I may not be the guy to talk to.
Is Carl planning on coming Monday, do you know?
I don't know, so we got information.
I bet.
We, we got information, and there's a reason, if you can put two and two together here, there's a reason why we met with JH&amp;H via video.
Sure, I got you. So, so I've got a couple.
I'm hopeful that maybe Carl can be here Monday, but I don't know exactly what that situation is.
I totally understand. I got a couple questions regarding to the fire code side of things.
Okay.
And you may have heard part of the discussion on there, I actually got involved in.
What is it?
Well, I'm fixing Teddy.
Okay.
Stand by. I kind of build you up right there, Teddy.
I can tell you like going around the mountain here.
I'm just trying to be sure I don't lose anybody, right? So we've got an issue, we've got an issue in one of the courtrooms on an exit sign, right? That's been stuck up into the back portion of one of the chambers that allows access to the back of it. So what I'd like to have from Carl is a couple questions. Number one, why the exit sign is there, right? Because I believe it may have been put in at different times, and I'd like some references on the fire code and why it's got to be there.
I got you.
So.
Yeah, so I, I don't know.
The problem this does is, this allows people in the room to enter the chambers in the back of the area.
Yeah.
And it's a secure area.
Secure area, right.
So there's several variations that are there in the code, so I want to be sure I interpret which one he's interpreting and that's putting this sign there.
Right.
So.
Does it have something to do with two ways of exit, is that what it has to do with?
It could be, but there's variations in the code that go along with exit signs. Like, for example, based on the occupancy load of a room determines on how many exits you need.
Got you.
Other variables that are in there, is it the building sprinkled or it's not, this building sprinkled, right? So depending on the occupancy loads you place in there, and the deductions you can make for furniture and things like that that go on, you may not need that exit sign right there.
Got you.
The judges and the staff don't want the exit sign there because the other day, they had somebody just walk straight back into the back of the courtroom.
Yeah, right.
Into an unsecured area.
Right.
Right? So, in my opinion, I don't believe that exit sign is warranted right there.
Got you.
So I'd like to see the information in the code that's basically telling me why that exit sign has to be there.
Does each of the courtrooms have dual exits?
Yes, and they have it there. So there's one large courtroom that's over there that does require, based on the occupancy load, but the ones that's for, say, Judge Odom, Judge McLaurin, and Judge Roberts, I don't believe justifies the exit sign that's there.
I'm with you.
And there's other things that there that go against the code I read, so I want to know what code he's referencing it off of to determine that that sign needs to go right there.
Right, you know, ultimately, the, it's going to fall in the lap, I think, of the city of Brandon to determine for us what may be ultimately required, that they could be the final determination of interpretation.
That's right.
And to be quite honest with you, and not to, I'm not intending to show any disrespect, but I'm less concerned about what the architect thinks about it and more concerned about what the fire marshal thinks about it.
And I've spoken to him.
Okay.
So I believe we're on the same page, he and I are.
Okay.
So what I need to do is get the clarification between him.
Yes.
And what the architect's saying. A lot of this is there, because there's a few things that say, like, for example, when you have a naked sign over there, it's still got to be ADA compliant to get up in those areas.
So is fire marshal okay with taking a damn?
I think you need to have that discussion.
Yeah.
I'm not going to speak to the fire marshal.
Is the board satisfied that if, if we can put the architect and the fire marshal together and achieve a meeting of the minds, and it's satisfactory to the board and to the judges?
Yeah, what I want to be sure, what I want to be sure is, in the courtroom, that the judges have a secure chambers, that people or occupants inside there can't just walk through into the judge's chamber.
I agree. And these, I think we get that worked out.
So, for example, a guy came through last week that wound up in Judge Roberts's office that just walked through the back of the courtroom.
Yeah.
So it should be locked and secured.
That's right.
Well, if it's one of those exits, it's got to be certain type of security on that door, so there is a, there is a clause, last thing I'll say, there's a clause in all the code books that are there, and there are different, obviously additions at their end, but the very first section of that whole thing talks about if you have security issues or things that come up, that the authority having jurisdiction can make those determinations on what doors are secured and what doors are not. So that supersedes all of the fire code, based on what the authority having jurisdiction says.
I understand.
So if we have that conversation between the two, I'd like to see if we can get that rectified.
Absolutely, all right. We'll make it a point to make sure that those conversations happen, and we'll also try to find out.
The rest of it wrapped up?
So the, there's a temporary certificate of occupancy that's been issued by the city of Brandon. There is a punch list that has now been put together that is being worked through, so there's a period of time, I anticipate, Jay, that we're probably at, at least thirty days away from button, buttoning up all of the punch list items. We may be somewhat longer than that. I don't have a follow-up because I've not had an opportunity to have a specific conversation with Carl yet, but I don't have a follow-up about the timeframe that he's anticipating. But, but I do know that the CO was issued, it's a temporary CO, there are, there is a punch list that has been put together that the contractor's having to work through, and that, my understanding is that it is being worked through.
All that landscape we got done, I'm sure it's putting out currently, all that's going to die, we don't have any water to it, so, I'm thinking they may be dead before they get through. That's the replant.
Is the sprinkler system working? Is it working?
Yes.
It does have sprinklers?
Yes, and I know it is on this side, because they've been, when I go home, they've been going off watering all the trees all around this side. I haven't really looked down that way, but it is sprinkled.
But there's a warranty on all that.
Yes.
I'm glad you hear sprinkler.
Yes, it is. It does have a watering system, yes.
And as we sit here today, our warranty's not running yet.
Yeah.
We're still waiting on that final certificate of substantial completion. I'm not sure where that stands at the moment. Again, though, these are issues that I think probably would have been addressed today if it were possible for our architect to be here.
It would have been nice if we could have had some nice, you know, ribbon cutting, but as is, you know, the place still doesn't look good enough on the outside to do one, much less the COVID situation.
Right. Well, and it may be better because of the uncertainty about how all of this ultimately will be wrapped up. It may be better for us to wait until we get that process completed before we attempt to get everybody together in one spot. Okay, if we're prepared, Mr. President, I'm ready to move to item A under my section, which is to set a public hearing for Lloyd Sims on the conditional use permit at 2056 Sunset Ridge Ridge in District Three. Just to set.
I'm making a motion, sir.
Sir. Motion by Brad, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Item B is an item that was brought to my attention recently. The coroner has, has been dealing with an issue that I want to bring to the attention of the board. This is a discussion item only, but it's to give you guys the information that I think you need. The state medical examiner's office is no, it's no secret, has been struggling through this process with both the virus situation, but also with some personnel issues that are in essence unrelated to the virus. There's, there's some controversy there. That's no secret to anybody. And so they are struggling to actually man the work of the state medical examiner's office, the outworking of that.
Didn't they all quit?
Yes. So that a number of their staff examiners walked off the job unrelated to the virus. And so they are woefully behind in their autopsy work specifically. That backlog of work has resulted in the system itself, system wide, statewide, well, central region wide, has resulted in a number of backlogs that are in essence related to, to some degree, with the state medical examiner's work product. But that work product not getting done has caused private morgue facilities to be backed up with bodies that are waiting to go to the state medical examiner's office. And that, that backlog has created a number of problems for folks like our coroner and others who are attempting to do just the normal course of what they do every day with folks unrelated to the state medical examiner's office. And so the, the question that has been brought forward is this, there are, this is, this is presenting an issue that is being exacerbated, but has been an issue for us for some time. And that is that the county does not have a facility where we can store human remains for any period of time. We essentially have to use and potentially abuse private businesses in our community to help us with this.
Last week, we got a murder and we have all been used with the chain of custody because of that.
Because of that. We are, we, we are finding that there are a number of issues with our not having a facility of our own. And this would be, what the sheriff has just raised is a, is a significant problem. Anybody's been involved in law enforcement for any period of time knows that if you're not able, if you've got a critical piece of evidence and you're not able to tell the court or anyone that asks exactly who has had possession and control of that piece of evidence, at every stage of the process, you have the, you have the, the potential for a criminal to walk because of a technicality. And so this, that's just one aspect of this. And so the coroner has raised a question. Others have raised the question, should we at least explore, for the sake of discussion, what it would take, a location and a cost for us to have a morgue facility? That would be the counties that we could access ourselves without having to intrude upon private business to help us with that situation. A critical situation, a difficult situation, but it's one that we need to talk about.
I'd rather have an agreement with some business personally. I don't want to get into morgue costs as far as employees go. Because we have a morgue and we're going to have somebody to run it and a building.
Right now, most of them, we send down the Dean's?
There's actually, there's two facilities in the county that, that we use, Chancellor Funeral Home in Florence area and Dean here in the Central Park County.
And there is something that they get out of that. I don't remember now what it is, but there is something they get out of it for housing the body.
They get nothing directly, but because that is oftentimes, Jay, that is oftentimes the first stop in the process. The family, what, what you will find is that the family will utilize the funeral home services for the rest of the services that would be expected, whereas they might otherwise use some other facility. But so that, they do receive an indirect benefit from helping us and I think they recognize that. But the truth of the matter is that it's, it is oftentimes an imposition where, where we have to get access to their facility and they are fooled.
Hey Brian, is the issue you had last week because of state crime lab, there are issues?
They put it down to how couldn't you? We take them there and they keep the body, there's a chain of custody. If they, if this guy was shot, so a bullet we needed, we had all this stuff and they called them up two weeks on my part.
So what would be the resolution going forward for us?
I don't know, like I said, Michigan time travel security, or you know, just something, I mean, something small with a dozen COVIDs in it or half a dozen.
Well, I saw where they, Heinz County had got a trailer.
Uh huh.
I agree with you. They have these staff full time, would it be, I mean, you're talking about just a store.
It, it doesn't. It, it doesn't. According, again, I'm, I, this is really just for discussion item. And it's, it's honestly what this, the purpose of this discussion is to take you guys' temperature so that we know, do we need to spend any time trying to get details together for y'all and, and bring forward some sort of potential solution here?
So where are we with the whole crime lab? Where is that situation at?
There's no solution that we're aware of. They finally got an employee back from a virus quarantine yesterday, according to what I was told by the coroner. They got one examiner. One. One.
So do we need to go ahead and set up some type of secure facility now then?
We're going to have to do something. I don't know how we're going to do it though.
I mean, that's outside my jurisdiction. If we could rent a paperweight or something like that.
The problem-
Whole sorts, Bob.
We still got to have somebody that's going to be there. And you can't, where I get you to lock it?
That's what they do with crime.
Yeah, lock it.
That's correct.
Mr. Word, you got something you want to add? That chain of custody, those.
I was contacting with the coroner the other day and we made some calls trying to get a temporary solution to an ongoing problem. And I made some phone calls to, to MEMA to see what, what is available to us because I know that we have a, an ESF function, mortuary services through the state. After running that up the flagpole and not being able to effectively articulate truthfully that this is a COVID related issue, which it is not, then COVID monies will not allow them to supply us with a refrigerated tractor trailer. They are exploring another avenue, another pot of money to, to see if they could do that for us as a temporary solution. There are some logistical issues with that. You don't have to have an employee there, you just got to have a secure location. Obviously meaning that this thing would have to be obviously locked and more than likely behind a secured fence. So that's your security issue which is easy to get around. Your other logistical issue with using a reefer trailer is the, the physical ability of getting the deceased inside the facility. Ninety-nine percent of the time, your coroner or your deputy coroner is by themselves. It may be two o'clock in the morning and there's no way that they're, I mean, he's, there's just no way you're going to pick up a two hundred and fifty pound deceased and, and pick it up five feet, put it in a trailer and then, logistically it's impossible without doing some work. There are some workarounds to be able to get around that and, but again, that's a temporary solution to his problem. And I'm, I'm kind of like the sheriff, I'm, I'm going to stay in my lane. But, but when the question is posed to me, I'm fixing to go run it down. My job is to find a solution to your problem. I don't care who you are, what your problem is. And, and that's what I'm trying to do on my end of it. But it is extremely temporary, if you go with a, go with a trailer, but we are working on that, so.
Well, you know, we're here doing that remodel. We might as well, we can just move Renee's office around a little bit.
Put a refrigerator unit in.
Yeah, put a fridge right there next door.
Walk-in cooler, all it is.
Walk-in cooler.
Oh, never mind, they don't-
I'm not going into cooler. I'm not going into cooler to get my tomatoes.
Yeah. Aye.
I, I just need some direction. Do we, do we pull together some facts? Do we look at options or are we at a point where we say, let's keep doing what we're doing and hoping it gets, and hope it gets better?
I think we're going to need to look at something, but I'm like Mike, a trailer? I mean, that's, that's not going to-
Well, I think we just need to come up with a plan. So if the sheriff does have something forward, we need to know where we can carry a body to and away securely, right? I mean, that's really what the media need is.
Well, we got to have something now and then.
No, sir, we're not.
More of a, a walk-in freezer somewhere.
Yeah, you can buy those portable walk-in game coolers or whatever.
They just have to maintain forty-two degrees. There's two options, mortuary refrigeration or commercial, like a restaurant type refrigeration, which is much, much cheaper.
How much it costs build, I mean, what does it take to build one inside of a building?
Just a little, wrong numbers, we looked at thirty.
They call these, they have these big insulated, all the walls and floor. And they come in and put it all together, walls about that thick.
Usually a concrete floor.
Huh?
Usually, I've seen them on a slate.
Yeah, but then they got a, they got a petition under it, I mean, something under it, yeah.
Oh, I really won't get into morgue business, so.
No, I'm just talking about if you had some portable something, I don't know what to tell you.
Want to make them trailers be the cheapest route and we get through with it. Rent a trailer or something.
Yeah, I don't know, you're going to get offended though.
You can build a platform.
One, one issue on, on the trailer is that most of, most of the trailers in the commercial trucking business, and Mike referred to it as a reefer, which is a euphemism for refrigerated. I had to look that up, by the way, because I wasn't following what reefer truck was supposed to be. I had some ideas that didn't seem appropriate, but, and it's not that I would know anything about any of that. Let me say that for the record. So what, what we find is that most of those are, are transmission driven devices. They, they utilize the power, the PTO power takeoff system of the vehicle, the cab, in order to function. They, they can't be easily retrofitted as shore power, is what it's called.
Have their own motors on them.
Yes. And so, so we've got to, we've got to cross that boundary to find even a temporary solution that would work in a stationary location. I'm, I don't know if that's the best option or not. I would say that, that the expense that we're talking about here is significant, but probably less than you are anticipating in terms of getting it set, set up, thirty to fifty grand to get it set up. Where I see some potential for additional discussion and just make sure we know what we're doing is the long-term cost of funding the electric supply and the security and the insurance and the protocols that would be required if you're involved in any type of law enforcement situation. That, that would take a good bit of discussion and understanding. Okay? So that's just a discussion item.
Aren't we just looking at a place to store it rather than that?
Yes, sir.
We're not putting a mortuary.
Yes, sir. So the, these would be storage and then the idea being that ultimately they will be relocated to an, an actual mortuary setting where they're going to be, where the family's going to have to deal with that situation.
Yeah, because the thing is, I've heard of some crazy, we're talking about this, bodies that weigh excess of four hundred pounds that they're having to deal with.
Yes, sir.
I guess in the past we were lucky because our previous coroner had it on his own facility.
Right. Is there, would there be a Tommy lift type, can we put on there that, that's longer than the normal Tommy lift that you got your roll a, roll a bed onto and then it raises up? They make, the most of them are kind of like three feet. They may have a longer one that you can roll the bed on.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that, that seems like the best solution, but, but I, I haven't really thought through all of that. You know, the, the whole issue of safety and you don't want to put your coroners or your deputy coroners in a position where they could hurt themselves somehow.
Right.
You know, that's, that, that is something we need to think through, so.
The up in air is a problem.
I, I think we can solve the short-term issue of secure location. I think we can probably handle that. Not prepared to tell you specifics just yet, but I think we can handle that. The, the issue that, that we don't know is what would it cost to get an appropriate? And, and keep in mind too, because I, I think your coroner really wanted to stress this. He has very strong feelings with good reason about how we deal with the deceased and, and how that is a service to a grieving family. So he has some real concerns about making sure that, that we don't forget that piece of this. So we don't, we don't want to just haphazardly try to throw something together.
Right.
And, and if we're not going to, you know, if we're not going to try to, to go at it full force, then we probably just need to stay with what we're doing. I, I want to give your coroner some credit. He is doing a good job of maintaining strong relationships with the private funeral community and that has served to benefit the county in the short term. We've been able to weather some of these challenges, but it has not been easy and it doesn't appear that it's going to get any easier anytime soon. I just think we need to-
I'd like to explore having some discussions with these private businesses and doing a, maybe coming up with some type of financial arrangement that we pay a certain amount. I don't know what that amount would be. I mean, if it's way high, then we wouldn't do it. If it's two hundred dollars, I shouldn't say a head, I like talking about cattle, but two hundred dollars a body. I mean, you think of all of the cost that, not just building a building, but the rest of everything. I think if we can have an arrangement with a private company and we just make it work.
Probably said to me, when I talked to him, is sometimes they don't have the space.
It's, it's a space issue.
The space issue.
He said five hundred and eighty-seven, just for numbers, five hundred and eighty-seven deceased in Rankin County since January the first. Chancellor, three deceased? Not sure about Dean.
I heard six.
Dean is six, I think.
The six.
Yeah.
And the deal with Heinz County, they're having the same issue, Mr. President, they're having the same, same deal. They're, they're, as a matter of fact, Heinz County sent their request up about twenty minutes before I called.
What about Mr. Roberts' facility? Is it being used?
No, I, I can't answer that.
Can we? I mean, I know that's a little bit of a, but you know, if we could rent it there, whatever, I don't know. Okay, we're moving on.
Okay. All right. That's all I had under my section. I do have one matter executive session. I'm going to go ahead and send out a, a beacon to the folks that need to be here for that.
All right, Ms. Lush.
Thank you. The first item I have is authority to pay additional moving cost quality group of Jackson an amount of three thousand three hundred for moved items outside of the original contract. One was minute book racks. There were some additional furniture and I believe you told me these were all Chancellor related.
All right, so I have motion approved? Motion. Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And then we just have the review of the agendas for August the third.
Anybody have any questions about this, the month of the third? I have something I'd like to shortly talk about under additional. Yeah, why don't I bring the sheriff those two? But how would I know? It's not on here. Do you, you want to go in and see? No, I want the sheriff to go. Aye.
Dave, hey, Dave just come back in.
Yeah.
I mentioned y'all, something about this in the past.
Oh, what? You see?
Dave?
Dave, is that, did you have something to add to it? Bears.
Okay, go ahead.
I think Paul can do it.
Um, the first thing I want to talk about is the courthouse, the new courthouse. I've missed something a few times, but you know, my cleaning crew, they're not losing anything to clean. They're still cleaning all the stuff that they were and now we have a whole nother huge building up there to clean. So I've got to have another person because they're, they're struggling to keep up with everything they're doing. So I need another detention officer to be over, a cleaning crew just for that building. I'm going to have four or five new trustees. I need somebody to be over and they're, they're just stay at that building all day long because there's so much carpet and glass and everything else to clean. I mean, I need another person for that. Also need, I think we may have it covered now, but just in case, if y'all could make a motion for law to authorize me to get extra master keys made because I'm telling y'all, two o'clock in the morning, the fire alarm's going to go off over there and we're not going to be able to get in the building.
We did, Ben was supposed to go.
Okay. I just want to make sure we had the access to get in. So I wouldn't have to get my wench out.
Yes, we, we got it. I totally make sure that you got one and your deputies, many as y'all need.
And then I, I should have already submitted this, well, I talked to y'all some about it, but I need, I'd like for y'all to, I don't know if it pre-approved Clay, Craig or what, but the Richland School District, you know, the Richland's pulled the three, they're not going to put their officers back in. I feel like we're doing it for the cities, we won't have to do it for Richland. There's going to be three positions, three more deputies. And of course we'll get the grant from the, the school district. I'm not asking for an increase in my budget and I'm going to, you have old cars and stuff like that.
We talked about that when you weren't here. Oh, yeah. And you know, is there any way we can go to them to help cover some of our additional costs? Like the vehicles or the-
Because your, what is it, fifty thousand is what's allocated for each officer?
Right.
But it costs more than?
It should cost a little bit, but I, I, I'm thinking fifty thousand dollars covers the salary and all the fringes and probably the overtime for a newer, pretty close to it. So, all I'm gonna be able is equipment stuff, and I can absorb it in my budget. But the way I see it is I'm getting deputies for the cost of a vehicle and everything like that. I'm not seeing it like that. And that's what I'm saying, I'm not asking for an increase in my budget. I can absorb the cost of the equipment and the cars.
So, you think this is a win for you, basically?
I think we have to do it, 'cause if we don't do it, who's gonna do it?
I mean, I know we do. I was saying, this is our one shot at it, so either we get the school to give us a little more.
Oh, yes, sure. I'll ask them and see and everything, you know, but again, they've been a.
How many other schools gonna come out, you think? All of them?
City.
There's not a lot left.
They have one more left.
Really?
Flow, Flow was the one that, and I know Stretch is pretty good, the Northwest Rankin Stretch.
Yeah, and let me tell you this too, now, the school district understand is, I'm not just gonna go out there on the street and grab somebody, throw them into school. I'm gonna be short. I'm probably gonna be five deputies short when the school year starts, so I'll have deputies just have to rotate between schools till I can get the people, who I think is the right people in those positions.
They gotta have to have special training? Is that different training for them?
No, it's not really different training. It's just that it takes the right person.
Yeah, I got you.
I don't wanna hire just anybody and then turn around and be embarrassed by something or, you know, grab, I wanna have good people.
Sheriff, if you know what?
Florence still does here, they're still doing theirs.
Yeah.
And Brandon, that's it?
Brandon.
Brandon.
No, we have the elementarys in Brandon.
Oh, we do.
So, how many deputies you think you got in schools right now?
Eighteen.
Eighteen deputies in schools?
But after this, the only thing left is Pearl.
Florence, everyone's part.
But how many, how many are we getting money from the school for?
Uh, I'd have to go back and see. All the ones in the cities. Now, you know, the other ones, y'all already funded that. Every school out in the county, y'all already paying for it.
Right.
Now, all the ones within the cities, I'd have to give you a list of all of them, but it's.
But there's a bunch in the Flowwoods, uh, for Northwest Rankin.
There's how many?
Probably six. Six elementarys. I don't know if they're all in the city.
One's out in the county, though. I think it's like five, four, five there, three in Brandon, alternative school, which y'all already covered. Um, so, I'm saying roughly the less than half of them.
You know, they got that funding to create their own.
Flowwood's putting offers in.
Fire, police station, you know, and so, you know, if they have additional dollars left, you know, after they.
They did, they cut it last year.
Man, I don't wanna tax their budget, obviously, but if they got additional money out there, they sure don't, we shouldn't be taking the hit for them, you know?
I have a good relationship with them, and I say, I'll be glad to ask them.
I mean, just a little bit more would be good, you know, maybe a thousand.
Like a do one thousand?
I'd go more than, maybe ten thousand or twelve.
Two thousand per deputy?
Yeah.
More.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask them and say.
I mean, ten thousand a year per deputy may help with the transportation, you know, the car you have to give them. Because you, three years, they'd be thirty thousand. Uh, hopefully they can drive a car for three years.
If, if I could remind the board that on June one, they set their budget, the school district did. So, we need to be cautious about, uh, the timing. Uh, I, I think that's a discussion that we need to have with the school district preceding the twenty-one, their FY twenty-two budget. Um, i- if the board is intending.
It's the same thing we were in last year.
It is.
When Northwest, or Flowwood dropped Northwest and.
It is.
You know, they were only able to pay us so much.
It's just more.
Right.
Flowwood was more.
Uh, just.
As I say, if anybody, the buck stops with us, we gotta take care of these kids, you know, regardless of what happens.
So, if they got, if they have us a little more, it'd be nice, but either way, we're gonna do it.
I- is that something we could plan on having a discussion with the school district about, uh, as we approach June of next year?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, then, uh, and I, I'm, I'm good with our going back and asking for a reset so that we better approximate the actual cost to the county um, and make sure that the alignment of the, whatever that they're gonna pay fits within what our cost is. I, I understand that we may have to bear some of the cost, but, um, I, I, I think we ought to have a continuing conversation with the school district so that we can keep cost and reimbursement as aligned as we can keep it. Um, but, but we need to be sensitive about their, the fact they've already budgeted this. So, I think what Brian would need, uh, and what the, what the record ought to reflect is that y'all add an item to the agenda today, if you're prepared to do that now, or you can do it Monday, I guess, but, uh, if you're prepared to take action to authorize Brian to enter into an, an agreement with, with the school district for three officers to cover the City of Richland schools.
What, what did Richland say was the reason? It's money?
No, I think they're just doing exactly what the other cities who have decided to do this. It's always gonna come down to money and budget, uh, with them. They see it as, um.
Well, I pay it if I don't have to?
Yeah.
I make the county pay.
They, they see it as, well, you know, so Brandon has, and, and Flowwood, Flowwood has done it.
And I may be speaking, I, I, I'm totally, but my understanding is, is that when they did this, they didn't hire any additional officers. They just moved officers to school. I think they need these officers back in the street. They didn't fund any new positions.
So, I guess my question is to help offset some of that money. Are there monies that we're paying these cities, we can offset some of this stuff that's we're having to pay? For example, the road stuff. How much should we give them on the roads? Hundred thousand or so?
We can't do that.
What are you talking about?
Well, and I want to tell you.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, I'm gonna take, take the money that we do back to say, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you do that?
No.
You can?
No, no. I mean, that, they get, by state law, they get that out for.
But there's other monies, do, is, I'm guessing that's my question, is there other monies we pay the cities? There's not, we just, like when.
Yeah, we do.
No, we don't.
Well, and, and let me explain something to y'all too.
We give Flowwood money for the.
Oh, I mean, yeah, we help them with other projects, absolutely, yeah.
I, I want to explain something to y'all also, now, that the, the benefit that I get out of this is that, um, right now, I'm probably five deputies short at the sheriff's office. The school deputies, school hadn't been in, they've been filling in the holes for me. Every one of them that you saw when we had the line set up, the traffic out here, those were school deputies that were running all the stuff during the COVID. So, I mean, they've been a great asset to the department, that the school district's been paying the bulk of the cost on.
Right.
You know, for, for this whole time.
Yeah.
I got you.
So, during the summer, you're always gonna get those?
During the summer, I've gotten, might stick them everywhere.
What about during school year? Do you get to do any after, during weekends or nights?
Yeah, if I need them, like I say, I let, a lot of them are worth the ball. I, I want them to get a relationship with that school and go to the ball games, get involved with that school district, you know, be a part of it and everything, and I, uh, invite a lot of them, you know, uh, to, to, you know, particularly, you know, to go to all the extracurricular activities, everything, be seen in that car and that uniform.
Yeah.
Around the.
All right. Do we need to add that, or we do it Wednesday? These officers, the three officers.
It really depends, it's, it's up to y'all. Uh, it'd be just as simple to add it right now and take care of it and get it off the books.
Make a motion to add it to the agenda.
All right. Have a motion by Steve, second by Jared, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I woke up my jail, my cleaning.
Cleaning crew.
Yeah, I need another person for my.
Add that, add that, that's B.
Add both of those, that'd be one motion.
So, we have motion approved personnel?
Yep.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
You got that, Jess? Was it add and, can you, can you help us?
Oh, that was to add?
Mark it out for us.
No, no, I make motion approve.
Okay, all right.
I make motion approve.
Second.
We did it.
All right.
We already did it.
We're making sure we did it.
You went, you were voting to do it?
I thought we had.
Pretend you did it right.
Okay.
Dave came back in, he might had a folder, he might have something if he wants.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Davis, did you want to address the board?
I have some information if you wanna hear it, or I could do it outside the board, it's totally empty, sir.
I'd rather do it during the board meeting.
Have you already spoken with the family?
I have talked to Chris Howie.
Chris, that's his name.
Okay. All right, well, come on up.
On one July, I got a call from Chris Howie, and he said that his father was, uh, in the veterans home in Coziesco, and that he was very sick, and, uh, that was one July. And, uh, he is getting medical care, his father was getting medical care, and, but he had passed away on or about twenty July. And, but when he, he said about seven or eight years ago, he came to my office. He talked about his mom being married to a former veteran who was killed in an accident in a helicopter crash in Langley, Virginia. But she had since remarried, and she had married another veteran, and he's the one that was, had passed away on or about twenty July. And, uh, what he wanted to do was try to get ahead of the game and get some benefits for his mother. But at the time he came in, she was still married to a veteran who was, uh, in pretty bad shape in the veterans home. And so, you know, he, I, I don't remember him coming in seven or eight years ago, but, uh, you know, she wasn't eligible to file. I mean, he, he was sick, but nothing was service-related or anything like that, so she wouldn't have qualified for a pension or anything. And so, he had gone to Elizabeth Lancaster, the state veterans home, uh, on North Street in Jackson, and had said, hey, uh, both my wife's husbands were veterans dead, but her first husband was killed in a helicopter crash. And so, she's helping him with some benefits there. He, she may be qualified, she may not, I, I really don't know. But the way I look at it, you, you apply for everything, okay, because they make the adjudication, so I don't know. But again, uh, she was married, uh, husband, second husband was still living, and, uh, he said, I just come in to get ahead of the game and take care of my mother, so, uh, that's all the facts and details on this. At, at that time, the second husband was living and, and she didn't qualify for any benefits on, on that, so.
Yeah, so, I guess the question comes back, he sent us an email after that.
I'm reading it right here.
Okay, read it out there. Read it out.
All right, uh, that's the one that you forwarded out, right?
That's right.
Yeah. It just said, Mr. Bishop, I live in Carson, on Carson Drive in your district. I think I met a couple of you, cou- you a couple of times. I wanted to make someone aware of an issue the county employed. Uh, I contacted Veterans Affairs Office, Old Courthouse for assistance for my folks. My dad at one time was, uh, was at the VA, VA home in Coziesco. He was an army veteran. Uh, yesterday, he passed away. I had several questions about his benefits, as well as questions of, for my mother. She's in the unique, uh, position here. She's a double surviving spouse. Her first husband was in the Air Force. Um, at any rate, I was treated very rudely and badly by a man in that office. He was of no help and basically called me a liar. I since have learned he has a bad reputation for bad treatment. I did finally find someone at the State VA Board that was able to help me. I'd be glad to give you, give some more details if needed. Thank you, Chris Howie. That was, that was the email that was, we all had, yeah. So, that's, that's where this came from.
Uh, and.
And I do, I will say, I do know sometimes in such sensitive situations, that sometimes you're looking for the answer, and you're not getting the answer you want.
Yes.
And so, you get, uh, you feel like you're not being treated right because you weren't getting the answer that you wanted. So, I'm, I'm, I'm leaving myself open there, but anyway, that is the email that we got, and so that's why we're here today.
Okay, and, and I appreciate you letting me tell you what happened. At that particular time, the second husband was still living, and he did pass away on or about the twentieth of this month, and he come in, I think it was on the first of July, it was.
Well, this message was on the twenty-first.
Okay, so, that would have been pretty accurate then. He told me it was, uh, uh, mu- a week ago, this past Monday, so that would have been on or about the twentieth of July. And, uh, he had gone to Elizabeth Lancaster, the state veterans home, and to pursue possible benefits on the first husband who was killed, and so, uh, I wasn't aware of that, but, you know, I would have, I would have helped and given the paperwork. But as far as, I, I don't understand the rudeness and unprofessional, I don't understand that, so, that's, that's not the case.
Details of that, so, it's just his interpretation. That's all I can say.
Sure.
Uh, well, maybe we bump that around, we get that, we'll learn from it, whatever, so, appreciate you coming back.
I wanted to make sure you were, were aware of that.
Appreciate.
I appreciate you coming back with the information you had.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, I think you had something you wanted to.
Quickly, um, mine has to do with roads. I have two roads that I'm really concerned with. Both of them are part of the bond. Andrew Chapel, no work going on. I was by there yesterday. Again, it was dry, it was a beautiful day, and no one was on the job.
What's supposed to be going on?
Bridge.
This is the bridge.
Bridge, oh, bridge.
Yep, boxcars.
Boxcars.
Um, I talked with Tim and Mike, and I want us somehow, every time we have a meeting, give me something that says, this is where we're at, or nobody's working, or contact the people that's got the contracts and tell them it's getting serious, all that junk. And, I mean, if, if we need to, let's pull it and, and use a bond, get somebody else. I think at some point, we've got to draw a line on these guys and quit playing with them and end up, like, a year later, saying, damn, I wish we would have pulled it a year ago, uh, because we don't have, but, uh, I mean, we're timed on this money.
That's right.
Stoll Road, whoever, wherever we sent out these letters, let's follow up on it. Because if the people don't send them back, and we, I mean, if we can't get it covered the right way, I don't, I won't take that money in the, I hate to say it, if they just drive on gravel, we got somewhere else we can put that money.
Yes, sir.
So, I wanna follow up and let's see if, who hadn't responded on that road and move.
Well, they're supposed to respond, you know?
We're, we didn't put money in there to buy a right away. They gotta sign, they gotta give us the right away.
Yeah, yeah.
They've been begging for this road to be fixed.
Right.
Forever, and I said, you know, we're not gonna buy the right away. Well, there's something, just, I guess, just won't respond, hadn't responded.
That's correct.
Whatever.
That's correct.
If they don't, I wanna.
Jared, please.
I'd be on the same road, they all finally did it though.
Put it in a paper.
Jared, we.
You know, we would love to fix this road, but some of the people that own the property.
Maybe we need to send another letter to, out and say, some of you hadn't done it, let's, let you, let you get on to your neighbor.
Right, we, we actually have, uh.
Yeah, there's been two.
The, so, uh, through my office, we sent out letters to each of the named owners of properties who were impacted. Uh, Tim's group, uh, put together, uh, the, the typical survey and plat that shows the delineated right of way that we need. So, we sent out letters and instruments to each of the property owners and told them that we had money in, uh, available to the county to provide for an improvement of Stoll Road that would include actual blacktop. But in order to do it, we would have to have the right of way donated.
Why would we, why would we need right of way, just, I'm just asking, to blacktop it?
To widen it.
Yeah, we, to improve and to ditch it, um, yeah, go ahead.
It hadn't, no, I mean, it's just, it's never drained properly. Water runs over the road.
It's gonna be wide.
It's that gravel road that, I mean, the, the traveling portion is probably wide enough to pay, but you have no drainage.
I, I see, I see, yeah.
And, and some of the issue too, is some of the, uh, some of the properties are described to, to.
Center of road.
That's right, that's right.
So, we're trying to clean all that up, to dedicate it right away, and the, the time to do that is obviously before you make improvements, because once you make improvements, nobody's interested in talking to you. Uh, you could actually go in and put some blackup in there, but you're not doing the ride.
Right.
So, the way to do it right is to get the right of way, get the drains fixed, and, and then the gas on.
Who's your contractor?
On that one?
We, we hadn't gotten that far yet, Daniel.
I'm talking about on, uh, Andrew Chapel.
It's, uh. The bridge guy.
Joe McGee Construction.
Joe McGee.
You know, he was blowing and going for a long time, and he's just, I mean, he was getting nailed and everything out there.
Was that the one, Bishop, you had trouble with in Pearl?
That was one with West Rankin Parkway.
Yes.
Well, it wasn't because of the same thing, though.
No, but you had trouble with that contract.
He was suing us because, you know, he felt like he should get paid, and really, truly, he never should have been. And, so, where we got crossways in it, that, I didn't warrant, warrant the contract, our, this project right here, you know, so.
Right.
But, uh.
But he cleared that one up.
Our ex-commissionser settled with him.
Yeah.
Against their, his own employees' advice, really stuck it to their own engineers, but it's got resolved, and we're moving on.
So, so we've had trouble with this contractor before, right?
Well, we didn't, it was.
Yeah, that, that was actually the West Rankin.
But, but then, turn around, he did, he did a road down my end, I mean, every problem.
I, I had, other people have all said, Joe McGee, that's, you know. I, I had, other people have all said, Joe McGee, that's, you know, good. Uh, and I imagine that when those COVID checks stop coming, they'll come back to work probably.
Yeah.
I, I have a feeling that's one of his deals.
Yep.
Eight hundred and fifty dollars a week.
I think you're right, Steve.
It's not stopping all the other contractors, though. But yeah, you're right, some of that is it.
Yep. Right. So on, on the Stoll.
What's his timeline on that?
His time is expired.
He's, he's in penalty now.
He's been notified of that.
Oh.
They haven't responded to that, but where they are now, as far as the project goes, is the structures are built and it's now moving into a dirtwork project versus a building boxes project. So that, that's the transition. And that's no excuse for not to be out there, but that's the status of the project, where it is. Is he'll have a different crew, they'll have this dirtwork crew come in. And they've also had some changes in their office, one of their main guys left. And I mean, that, obviously, that's, that's not an issue to the county. I mean, we got a contract with them, get the job done.
Right.
Uh, and that's what we've been trying to explain to them is that we're looking for a finished project. You handle all your internal stuff internally.
At what point will we pull, will we pull a bond on him or exercise that?
When, when the board decides that completion of the project is in jeopardy and the board's not satisfied that it's gonna be handled. You, you guys authorize pulling the bond.
Sounds like getting real close.
Well, we need to communicate that to Mr. McGee's group and just make sure they understand that's the next step in the process. Not that I anticipate it's gonna help us much. We did the same thing with Hemp Hill folks, and that didn't seem to get much traction, so.
Well, the, yeah, because he, he actually, so much work going on, moved office down here, is it Flowood?
He actually has an office in Lem Adams' old office building.
Oh.
I'm not sure you.
Right next door, Mark, in case y'all.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
He owns that building now.
Did he close the brand office, did he?
Oh, he did.
Oh, he's not here.
I think, that's, that's what I was told.
Okay, I wouldn't wear that.
Because I'm like you, Steve, I never heard anything bad on him. Except the deal with the West Rankin, I kind of thought they could have it either way.
They have Lynch Street right now. You see that?
Has distanced himself from the daily operations of companies. Lem Adams calls some, he's still a worker company. But, I mean, I think when they came back to finish the boxes, he got back involved. So I think he's actually back involved more than he was.
I mean, they've done some great work here. They did the first phase of East Metro, knocked it out quick. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they got nothing.
They actually came in and cleaned up the rest of, did the boxes in Oak Grove Subdivision.
I thought Hemp Hill did that.
Sidewalk, they subbed it out to his son-in-law. So I guess it's a separate company from McGee, but still is part of his family, so.
They did the four seventy-one fly over the railroad. I mean, there was some, there's been some pretty significant projects that he's done that you would think historically, I mean, you know, they've, they've done good work, and so.
He jumped on it real quick, he was way ahead, and now he just dropped everything.
Yeah.
Something happened, something's happened, we're not aware of.
Can I, uh, just, I wanna go back to Stoll Road now that we're talking about that and, and just give you guys, especially Steve, the benefit of some of my experience on, on working. What I am concerned about is that there are so many parcel owners on Stoll from start to finish. There's probably upper thirties of number of property owners. There's probably half of those owners that actually live out of state. And so what I'm finding is that we're getting very little response. Uh, if, if they're local, if they're a local guy, I was able to actually go out there on site and meet with them and get an instrument on the, on the top of my truck. And, but, but when they're in Chicago or Montana, I'm finding that we're just not getting any response. I'm, I'm almost at the point, Steve, where I would say that I don't know that we're gonna be able to get.
They're out of state.
Right of way instruments.
That's not helping them.
From, from everybody that we need them from. And so I'm almost at the point of saying, is there a way for us to look at doing a scaled version of this that recognizes that we're going to, we're gonna have an end product that wouldn't be optimal, but is satisfactory? If we could stay within what we think is the right of way and, and recognize that the road's not gonna be perfect, then I think we're, we're probably better served to keep it on the books. If we, if we want to keep going down the road, that we want this to be a perfect outcome, like we expect Andrew Chapel to be, like we expect Gunner to be, then we probably need to revisit how we wanna do the project.
Other than Skull's kinda narrow. Well, it goes on out to.
It chokes down.
What's it coming from, four seventy-one?
It crosses both sides, so it's got a piece of both of them.
Yeah, I've been down.
That's the other side, though, is, maybe.
Portions of it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Portions of it is.
Right, that's right.
Not all of it, but it's, again, it's the same era.
I would like, I would like to get with Mike and Tim and see.
What's it run into, is it four seventy-one? Yeah, I've been in.
What can we do within the boundaries we got?
I think the worst spot is up there, close to twenty-fifth, where, uh, that guy. Subdivision, dirt pit, uh.
Murphy, Ryan Murphy.
I think right in there is probably the worst spot, isn't it?
And we have runs.
And we've got him.
So I, I think it would be helpful, Steve, if I could offer this options. If Craig will give us a list, we'll map which ones we have.
What we got, yeah, yeah.
And then go out there and feel me, Mike, go out there and see if we can get some of it improved, you know, to a point or.
Yeah.
Because you have that, that end, that west end that comes off of four seventy-one, is pretty narrow. Got those businesses, just as you come in on. At least four seventy-one.
Where east of twenty-five.
Yeah, it's, huh, is it twenty-five?
Where east of twenty-five. This project is on the other side of twenty-five.
I know, I know, I know where you're talking about, but I'm saying, the opposite end. I've been down on it, there's a couple of businesses down there.
That's where it tees in the four seventy-one. That's on my side.
I'm just saying, it's got trees right on the road, and this is probably common, not normal, country road, yeah.
You got more homes on your side of Stoll Road side than.
How far is it from one end through there, all the way through?
Maybe a mile, maybe.
We're gonna do a mile, I think.
No, I'm talking about from your end all the way through.
Oh, I'd say.
Oh, all the other ends of Stoll Road?
Probably three miles.
Yeah, I'm probably a three-quarters of a mile, maybe from four seventy-one, twenty-five.
And then it's another like two miles.
I was wondering how long it took, if I've been on the.
Yeah.
So our, our dilemma is this, because we are trying to do this as a donate right of way so we can improve the road project, which, by the way, I applaud. Um, I, I think that is, i- if we can do them that way, that's clearly the way we wanna do them. What we're seeing, what I'm seeing, is that when you get up into the numbers of parcels that we're dealing with, you're gonna get, even, even the best-case participation that you get from people that are around, if you've got anybody that's an absentee owner, you're gonna have difficulty getting those parcels. And so if you get ninety percent of them, you're still in a position where your project may not be able to, to be designed the way you want it. Uh, and you're, you're only waiting on ten percent of the parcels. And here's the other part, that's the real kicker about it. You don't have a way, because of the way we're doing it, you don't have a legal mechanism to eminent domain the property. There's not a legal mechanism. Why? Because you haven't engaged a right-of-way acquisition agent? You haven't made an offer, you haven't determined an offer amount, you haven't made an offer amount, you haven't met the preconditions that you need in order to move forward with an eminent domain process. So it's an either-or, and unfortunately, this project is, I think it's just got too many parcels with absentee owners. That's not anybody's fault, we didn't know what the state of ownership was, but we're seeing that the absentee owner issue is what's impeding progress here.
Once you do the, what Tim says, so you know, we know how many absentee, what we're looking at these absentee owners, where they are. So you kind of get an idea.
I think we've got some strategic pieces that are in high visibility areas that we can go ahead and move on. Ryan Murphy's piece is right, I mean, that's the front door. So, and we've got the piece across the road from the oil company. So we've got some nice strategic pieces at a strategic spot, highly visible spot, that I think we can go forward with what we had anticipated and designed. And as you leave twenty-five, you're probably gonna have to really squeeze it at that point, is what I'm getting at. But, but maybe we can make that work. Okay.
Our last meeting, y'all talked about energy, and y'all mentioned them about.
That's, that's Andrew Chapel.
Yeah.
Yes.
Where are we at with that?
They have provided us with some information on one of our projects, but we are still, as of today, we're still waiting on their final analysis and request for the county's amount to contribute. We're waiting on that. By the way, they were, that, that was promised to us on the fourteenth so that you guys could act on it on the fifteenth if you chose to.
Oh, this coming to me?
Passed.
Last meeting? Oh, so they're.
They, what I got in response to that was a cancellation of a conference call on the fourteenth. No explanation.
Hey, Mr. Perez, last thing I want to mention was, we got our engineer and road manager in here. If you would, on the internet, if you could look up Hemp Hill Construction and see if you can locate a contact number and a better email, maybe to General Concerns or Information or something like that. And I'd like to have them come in, since their ticket is still open and the account has not been closed, and we still have money in the project, and there's still open in spots at Spillway Road and North Shore. We're gonna meet, we're gonna do something different, we're gonna meet on the first Monday this month. It's gonna be at nine o'clock here. So if you wouldn't mind sending that over to them, I'd love to have Hemp Hill, Ms. Chance, put them on the agenda. Will you?
They, they were at Lynch Street yesterday.
So we had, we got a sighting, it's like Bigfoot, we got a Bigfoot sighting.
Working on Lynch.
Monday, Monday. So add, add them to the agenda in public comments. And Tim, if you would, also reach out to those guys if you can.
We had an inspection last week, some of y'all may have heard about it.
I did.
Road manager kinda got off the chain a little bit, but anyway, uh.
What is, what?
Mike's auditioning for veteran service officer.
Yeah, veteran service officer, but anyway. Uh, we met with him, Dot, a little good news on it, that we did get worked out in the issue. The COVID letter is no good if the owner does not accept it. So otherwise, if y'all don't accept the COVID letter, we get the charge days.
The COVID letter didn't get us, COVID didn't get us at Hemp Hill.
No.
I know that.
A lot of things may have, but COVID didn't.
They was using the COVID as, we can not charge these days and all that stuff. Am I correct in that meeting with him? That's, M. Dot said that was up to the discretion of the owner to be able to do that, whether we charge or not. I told him that I couldn't speak for y'all, but I'd present it to y'all, and we would let them know what that was, so I will need, need some guidelines on that, whether we're gonna enforce that or not.
I'll let Slay address it, but I'm not for you.
You want, you want me to address it?
Yeah, I mean, probably, I, I can't get anywhere.
Yeah, whatever, whatever grace they could have possibly been entitled to has long since lapsed.
When did the time run out? When did it, was?
About four, five months ago.
Before COVID.
Oh, probably about the time of it, yeah. March, will it have a sign frame?
March, it was in March.
And their time, remember, is on a working day, not a calendar day, so there's no specific.
And just, the two-second refresh, it's a ninety-day job that started last February. I don't know what this is today, but we're, we're definitely in a penalty phase.
Absolutely.
So that's, they were wanting to use that to get out of penalty phase. That'll be, y'all have to make a decision.
I, I believe.
Make official action on that?
No, sir, I, I, just, just a direction from this standpoint. We've got a number of projects. Some of them, obviously, will impact MDOT with it being a, a state aid contract or otherwise have some sort of federal dollar component to. We have a number of those contracts that'll be out there. We also have our own contracts that do not invoke anything from DOT or Fed funds or whatever. Uh, I would like for this board to simply identify as a standing policy that we are not going to authorize any sort of workaround or grace period for road construction projects that is COVID-related. We, we're just not gonna do it, just as a standing policy. It's not in our contract, it's not in there. It, it's, there, there is nothing from the standpoint of what we call force majeure language. Uh, we, we don't recognize a pandemic as a force majeure clause workaround in any of our contracts. And I don't wanna get in that business. They have the ability to protect themselves on the front end, put pandemic in your force majeure clauses, and we'll consider it at that point. None of our existing contracts have that in there.
Right.
I wanna start. I, we don't, we don't wanna work around the contract language.
Do you need a motion for that?
I, I don't, I just need you guys to say, we're on board with that.
That's what I'm on board with.
We're on board with that.
So do you mind, Tim, reaching out, see if you can? Next week, you and I are going down there, I think, we'll just start driving around. We'll start Lynch Street, Brad.
Yeah.
It's a good place to start, see who's seen you, Jack.
Hey, uh, real quick, so we move on, take care of our boat and stuff. Uh, you know, we've been talking about changing our contract, and we can't put punitive things to hurt someone, but can we not put language in there? If they do get to a certain point in time and they're not working, that we can go ahead and call the bond?
Well, you, you have the ability to call the bond whenever you get right ready. If they're, if they are in default, you can call the bond. So they are out of time. You've got, you've got, um, you, you've got multiple contract rights that are invoked on, on both the bridge, the, uh, the Joe McGee project and on the Hemp Hill project.
All right, so hang on a second, we can call the bond today?
Yeah, so here's the issue with calling the bond on the Hemp Hill project. You're, you're at the end, that there's almost nothing left to be done, am I right? Yeah, yeah, so you're, I, I don't know what benefit you get from that, to be quite honest with you. In fact, I think you probably end up in a situation where the project is even further delayed as a result of that. So you gotta keep that in mind, that, that there will be an additional delay on top of delay so that the, the process of calling the bond is not perfect, okay?
I'd like to.
But, but what it does is it, it puts the bonding company in the position of, at that point, being responsible as the general. The, the hard part about it is, and this is why we don't like, this is why we don't do bonds for subdivision protective work, that's why we do letter, letters of credit. When you call the bond, you don't get to dictate who gets to come in and fix. The bonding company makes that call. And invariably, the first person they call, the contractor you got. They'll send your contractor, that is in default, out to finish the job.
Does that affect their ability to get a bond in the future?
It absolutely does. Uh, their history with respect to the, with a bonded project will impact what it costs them to secure bonds.
So some of the things that we're not complete with on the Hemp Hill jobs, obviously the sidewalk's destroyed, where nobody can cross through it. It hadn't been striped, what else is it, the markings?
That, that's the two main things.
And this, and then we've got a massive flood area right there now, that's been attributed to something. And we'll just say something if we don't know what it is yet. Hopefully, we're in a point of trying to figure that out. But we've got almost an issue now of worse than where we were.
Yes.
So if we don't have any kind of direction, I'm gonna try to do what I can and figure out how to get two more votes to call bonds on the next few meetings, so.
I don't think that's.
Based on the punch list that.
I'll, I'll cross you as a note, I'll go to Brad.
No, no, what I'm saying, they, they're gonna, they could drag it out worse on you that way. I'm looking at.
Worse. I mean.
It can be worse.
I don't know how much it can get much worse.
And you just.
Based on the punch list that was developed at the meeting with M. Dot last week, we're meeting with Hemp Hill this week to address, attempt to address those situations where the, we told, we, we had, we left there with the plan on the sidewall, uh, obviously the striping, there, there's some issues where, uh, with the drainage that we're questioning. And so we're not really pressing the striping because we, if they have to do something with the asphalt, we don't want to tell them to strip it, so temporary is still there, so. But they're geared up to strip too. And then, like I said, we're meeting with them this week out there, I've met with them, I'm not sure if it's got here today, uh, to address the punch list items with the, just where some drives tie into North Shore Parkway.
When is that meeting?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if it happened yesterday.
Chuck, me and you are going to meet. Me and Chuck's going live at the meeting. Keep your phone on. Call Bishop, see if he can, see if he can stop.
All right, let's, uh, is that all for additional business? He, he tied up.
All right, any more additional business?
All right, is that it?
Executive? Yeah.
All right.
I have a matter of potential litigation that I need to talk to you guys about.
All right. Have a motion, cause we need to go into the next session.
No.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jared, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Now that I have a motion going into the next session, for personnel, motion by Steve.
Litigation.
Litigation, sorry. Seconded by Garrett, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. All right, we're into the next session. Yeah, I'm sorry.